Good morning, everyone, and thank you for coming and attending and listening to us via[36.54][36.54]internet and social media. And I want to say thank you to my fellow supervisors for joining us today in today's meeting for June 16, 2020. Would Supervisor, oh, no, I apologize. Nope. Pledge of orders, that's right, I'm right. Would Supervisor Medina please lead us off in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you.
Ready salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Supervisor Medina. Then also Dulce, will you please provide the public on procedures and how to meet and how the public can communicate with the board during this regular meeting?
Yes. Good morning, Board. So if you would like to participate or provide a public comment, if you're participating by Zoom, there's a raise your hand icon on the bottom middle of the screen. So you press that and that notifies us you would like to make a comment. If you're participating via phone, dial or hit star nine and that also raises your hand. We also accept public comments before the meeting via email to the clerk of the board if you can't join us by Zoom.
Thank you Dulce. Is there a motion for certificate of posting?
So moved Mr. Chair Gilio.
Medina, second.
Motion by Gilio, second to Medina. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries, ayes, zeros. Thank you very much. Now we will go to presentations and recognitions. Do we have any today? None? We have none today? Okay. Next thing is public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board. Do you have any, any members of the public?
You have been unmuted.
Yes, this is Rosa.
Yes, madam.
This is Rosa Fernandez. This is my turn or?
Yes, madam. Yes, your turn.
Sorry, it was confusing. So this is Rosa Fernandez with San Benito Health Foundation. Thank you for allowing this opportunity for comment. We wanted to take this opportunity to thank Supervisor Pedro Estelo for his participation and his efforts in loaning us the equipment to make the event up to June 13. We think it's best we have an event to be the frontline, which was food distribution for farm worker community. And it was an event that incorporated around California and Washington state, the postal event from four to six. We served about 599 participants that day and over 200 families. And it was very successful. But once again, I want to thank Supervisor Pedro Estelo because without his help on Friday, it would have been very difficult to allow the semi that came away to distribute some good. And we had local participants and vendors to perform and affiliate these states to perform. And we really appreciate everyone for participation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your acknowledge meeting.
Next.
Good job, Anthony.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Courtney, if you could please state your name.
Courtney Evans.
Yes, madam.
Hi, there's Courtney Evans. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, madam.
Perfect. I am here to strike a strong flag. Once again, a code of S is standard of conduct for the board of supervisors. The third time I've had this request to put an agenda item, also to have explained process for the board and health department so that there is tracking, tracing, and record keeping of the choices, behavior, and actions that are made by our local officials. This has some things that I have gone through and spoke to board of supervisors personally, an email request, and also sent a request survey. I sent them once again, some requests asking for there to be an agenda item for a code of ethics, a standard of conduct for our elected officials. I'm also asked for a complete process to keep record of board of supervisors, countyways, and health department involvement with the community. Thank you.
Thank you, madam. Next speaker.
David, if you could please state your name.
Yes, this is David Patrick.
Yes, sir.
I want to, I want to address the use of N 2920 to not allow public in meetings. N 2920 simply says in person adherence is waived, not prohibited. It doesn't mandate teleconference. It leaves your obligation to them. At this point, though, it is unlawful because the order is unlawful. It was never legal. Article 138625, State of Emergency. The government is hereby empowered to claim state of emergency in an area affected or likely to be affected thereby when, A, he finds that circumstances described in subdivision B of section 8558 exist either he has requested to do so in the case of the city by the mayor or executive, in case of a county by the chairman of the board of supervisors or county administrative office, or he finds that the local authority is inadequate to cope with the emergency. None of these apply to this order, this order, certainly not now. Article 2, 8558B, as previously referenced in 86.5. Three conditions for degrees of emergency are established by this chapter. At the subsection B, state of emergency means the duly proclaimed existence of conditions of disaster or of extreme peril to the safety of persons and property within the state caused by conditions such as air pollution, fire, flood, storm, epidemic, and I'll stop there because this is the excuse for the emergency order and the epidemic never happened in the state of California. Epidemic definition, affecting or tending to affect a disproportionately large number of individuals within a population, community, or region at the same time. That simply never happened and isn't happening in California or San Benito County. This order is illegal by definition and that makes this county order illegal as well. You cannot claim ignorance, I just explained the law to you, as written. You should immediately dismiss this health officer for following the unlawful orders and this local order must be lifted due to the illegality of the state order. Therefore, N 2920 is not legal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madonna, if you could please state your name.
Mr. Chair, all the COVID items could be pushed to the, to the agenda item if you wanted to, if, if somebody's going to speak about the COVID.
I have to give the public the opportunity to speak under public comment and then also whatever the item is on the agenda.
I concur with you.
I just, we have to.
No, I concur.
We've done it forever and we're going to continue it.
I agree.
Thank you Supervisor Medina.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor. This is Bay Dana, right as, resident of San Benito. I'm going to be speaking out of turn, but I had a comment on the consent agenda. On item 16, I want to urge the supervisors to pull that from the consent agenda. I don't think we, the people, I think it's been proven by the number of calls you get against this mask versus for the mask. We definitely do not want to support an automatic extension of Dr. Giller Ducci's contract, number one. Number two, where is it on the agenda to talk about when the meetings will be open to the public? Because we, we were coming down there this morning, but we were told that it was probably going to be on the agenda and it might be there. I just don't see it. And so we opted to wait to hear from you guys when the plan to open, number, that's number two. And on top of that, will you consider open to the public and still zooming? Because there are people who listen in who can't necessarily be present, but the people who can be present ought to be able to be present. Thank you.
Thank you, madam. Next speaker.
Vicki, if you could please state your name.
Good morning, everyone. I'm not sure if this is the correct time for me. I'm here at the request of Anthony. So if you think it's more appropriate that I speak when you get to that agenda item, I can, I can wait.
Yes, please wait, madam. We will call upon you when the time comes.
Okay, thank you. I just wasn't sure.
Is that correct Supervisor?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, that's correct.
Hunter, if you could please state your name.
Hunter Funiel, resident of San Benito County. I just want to second what Mr. Patrick mentioned earlier, as well as Bay Dana, that we move these meetings back to in person. Just speaking from a practical level, there, it's very hard to hear you guys at times, just the connection you get poor, as well as you're all muffled. You're in, you're muzzled in masks. So we, sometimes we can't even understand what, what you guys are saying. So these meetings need to be made in person, again, at least the option, because I think, I think that we'll, we'll be able to cooperate better like that. And I just want, I want these back in person to start next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Zoa, if you could please state your name.
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, madam.
Hi, good morning. My name is Zoe Jones. I'm resident of Hollister. And I've been listening in to these supervisor meetings for some weeks and I have spoken by time. I'm just so disheartened by the actions, or rather the inactions of the board. At the minimum, your willing unwillingness to recognize the unlawfulness of the mask board just blows my mind. You are trampling our God given rights. How dare you guys do that? It's, ugh, I'm just so frustrated with you all. California law, as you know, an emergency is defined as imminent and proximate threat. We are not in an imminent and proximate threat. Dr. G said last week, and I quote, "We are no longer in the danger zone." How then do you justify the ongoing order? Where is the scientific and lawful data to support it? The California Department of Public Health states there is limited evidence to suggest that the use of cloth-based coverings by the public during a pandemic could help reduce disease transmission. Cal OSHA, cloth-based covers do not protect against COVID-19. I feel so sorry for the employees that are forced to wear these masks. It's pure torture. I can barely wear one for a couple minutes without touching my face, which by the way, is how the disease is spread. So I would argue that maybe you guys want the disease spread. I strongly also oppose agenda number 16, extending the term for Dr. G. He's awful. You need to remove him. This provides no scientific data because there isn't any. Let the people choose. End the mask order. I miss my oath. Thank you.
Thank you, madam. Next speaker, Courtney.
If you could please state your name.
Hi, this is Ava Catada. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hey, I just wanted to hop on, give my personal opinion on the mask order. I'm not here to discredit anyone based on what they feel is right for them. If you feel like it's safe for you to wear a mask, by all means, do what you got to do. That's your right too. I personally refuse flu virus that has over 98% survival rate scare me or my family. With that being said, in the past few months, I've seen numerous amounts of people touching and adjusting their masks in first response, then just eating fruit from the produce section. I do believe that this is the false set security and it is cross contaminating more than everyone is left to believe. Let's all go back to basics. Stay home if you're still sick, wash your hands, and for the love of God, stop touching your face. We are all very capable. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to the next speaker, I just been, been abreast of the situation that we have our doctor here. It's going to be here for, be, be here and available for the next 35 minutes. So if, if it's okay with the board and if it's okay with the public, we would like to move item number 27 up right now.
16.
It's, it's, no, 27. Was it 16, Dre, or 27? 27?
It's 27.
Yeah.
COVID item, regular agenda.
Yeah, the COVID. If it's okay with the public, we're willing to listen to your comments under public comments and then we won't be able to hear from the doctor and get an update from COVID-19. Or shall we allow for the doctor to come and make this presentation and then have a healthy dialogue, dialogue between the public if that's allowable? Supervisor Medina?
I would go ahead and concur with what you're saying.
Thank you Supervisor Gilio.
I concur with what you're saying.
Thank you Supervisor Patel.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you Supervisor Hernandez.
Sure.
Okay, then, and just for the public, we will give you the opportunity to speak, but we're going to move the agenda a little bit right now and move number, number 27 right now under public comments and we'll return back to public comments. So bear with us and give us a couple of minutes until we hear the presentation update on number 19. Okay, right?
27.
I'm sorry. 27, right?
27, that's correct.
Supervisor Medina. And Dr. G, if you're on the phone, actually Tracy, if you want to go ahead and open up, Tracy Belton, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Dulce, can you please share the topic? So Dr. Geller Ducci is on stage. As all of you are aware, he is our interim health officer and he has committed to, and so he is available to provide his update and answer any questions for the board. As Professor Dela Cruz indicated, he's only available for a short time. You can advance next slide. Dr. Geller Ducci, if you're available, please.
Oh, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And thank you for accommodating. Yeah, good morning. Thanks for accommodating my schedule today. Yeah, just about the face covering order. Recognize that it certainly is taking uncomfortable and I'm thrilled to hear all of your voice relate. The loophole face covering continues to be based on best available evidence. There have been several recently published scientific studies that support this and it is continued to be strongly recommended or required by the WHO, the CDC, TDPH, the Association of Periodic Health Officers, many academic medical institutions. This is not a, you know, a rogue law that's based on nothing that's something I truly believe medical professionals, that it helps our community and it, it is part of the reason why we have been able to avoid, you know, disaster here in terms of overwhelming our healthcare community. The, there really isn't any credible medical evidence that facial covering causes things like low oxygen or high carbon dioxide levels or even increased susceptibility to reinfection from one zone pathogens. So as we continue to reopen, the face covering order provides really a layer of protection for businesses, as I said last week, for their employees, for the public to rely on those businesses and those people to be able to come to work. If you may know, the state is issuing guidance on reopening and those guidance includes very specific instructions about requiring facial coverings to be worn by employees and customers in certain situations, including the new guidance coming out for personal care services, nail salons, tattoo parlors, massage services coming up. This is a statewide order for those industries and it's, this order actually applies to several other industries as well. So relaxing this order really puts businesses in a difficult position. And so there are many situations where face covering is not required, you know, such as in your home, in your car, when you're outside, when you're able to maintain social distancing, when you're able, you know, when you're in a restaurant and eating and drinking, when you're exercising outside. Certainly, as the order has always said, young children and medically fragile patients who are unable to tolerate a face cover are not required to wear them. So it's clear, facial coverings are not perfect in terms of preventing spread and really they don't play much of a role in terms of protecting yourself. I wear a mask to protect you. You wear a mask to protect me. So we'll continue to push that message, but I really do not see any medical basis for reversing this order. So I think that's, that concludes that section and I'll, let's see, as far as our local numbers and data, I think Tracy, you have some graphs to show and I, I think what we'll, we'll say is that we continue to have a steady increase in the number of cases. We're certainly, I think, we've had tenuous success. I am, I am concerned that, that we could easily lose ground and I am obviously concerned that by doing so, we could be in a situation where we'd have to go back to earlier stages. There are other counties, including rural counties, that are currently in that situation. I don't want San Benito County to become in that situation. I think that would hurt us economically and really set us back in terms of the progress we've been making. So I mentioned the stage three expansion for personal care services. I'm happy to take any questions at this point, or if you'd rather go back to Tracy's presentation now and I can take some questions after that.
I think we're going to have a question and answers with you and, and the board members of Dr. Supervisor Patel. Okay.
I, I, I don't think I have any questions, doctor. I appreciate you taking the time this morning, but I certainly want to continue supporting your decision on the face mask. I, I think it's effective. You know, the other side says there's no scientific data that it helps. I disagree. I've seen it and I, I don't think there's any scientific data that claims that they're not effective in some regard. We have to continue social distance. We have to continue protecting each other for COVID. We have seen a spike. We are very, last night on the news, Monterey County could go back to, you know, more restrictive measures and because of the, the high increase of cases, and I don't want to see that happening here. So I, I'm going to continue to support you and I just want you to know that.
Thank you Supervisor Patel. Supervisor Hernandez?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I, obviously I have concerns with, with what the doctor said and some of them is part of, has to do with this contract, but I'll address that at the item once we pull it. But I strongly disagree, doctor. I mean, even when it comes to this, this process, this legislative process, to be fair, to be clear, if we're truly trying to be honest, anything that you mentioned, which is part of the rationale that I'm expecting with the conversation about the contract, is we always, always, always need to have information present for the public to digest before making any statements about evidence and data. Otherwise, we're basically putting the public into an assumption mode or understanding that we basically have to trust whoever's speaking, that there's truth to what they're saying. So, and I'm not saying you're not being truthful, doctor, but just to be fair, if we really want to do the honest thing and the right thing, we always present that data and we don't just iterate information without clarifying where that data, how we, how we get people to think about what that means and then understand how to digest it and then ultimately have questions for us, right? Because that's our legislative responsibility is to make sure that we're, we're doing our due diligence and we can't do that without information. So I would definitely strongly recommend that, that we have information ahead of time. So nonetheless, I actually did a poll with my own staff and, and I asked them, how is this mask impacting you? You wearing, you know, I have some shifts. They're actually seven to eight hours. And all of them unanimously basically said, is Peter, I have a hard time breathing. And I've actually, when I've been in the shop, I'm, I'm paying attention. I'm watching them go to the back and they're literally taking off their mask so they can catch their breath. And that's not, that's not a relative term. That's not an assumption. That's me seeing the evidence. I actually talked to a friend, a neighbor who's a banker. She manages a lot of people. She told me, Peter, we're constantly having issues with these masks, whether or not, not just dealing with touching her face, but people basically having to worry about passing out, you know. And I, it's funny because I went to the grocery store and that was one of the, the clerks that told me, they're like, yeah, I actually had to catch my breath because I felt like I was going to pass out. So it's, you know, if we're talking about science, I'd like information about the CO2, what it means for CO2 to impact your body and what are the impacts of it, right? That's a reality. That's something we can't ignore. So I, I just, I don't want, I just think it's not right to put out blanket statements without any kind of supporting information. So and, to a certain extent, create the context of the conversation where it's very well rounded, where we're not just saying this mask order is good and then we're telling you why as far as preventing cases. What about the unintended consequences? I'd like that conversation to come to light because I think that's, that's not just fair, but it's right. So when it comes to, you know, some of the things that were mentioned as far as, yeah, the mask, the conversations that I've had is also liability. I'd like to know what we were going to do about the liability if things happen. If someone gets injured because of this mask, I know that there's exemptions, but nonetheless, I mean, we're basically pushing for this mask order to still happen. To a certain extent, the exemptions really create an honest question and I'd like county council to answer it, is how is it that even matters? Because these exemptions by default create an ambiguous environment to manage, which basically means the mask order really has lost its validity because you have people that are going to wear it because they, they're either need to or afraid to, or you're going to have some people that are not going to wear it because they either oppose it, or you're going to have people with valid medical reasons just the same that are not going to wear it and they're not going to tell you about their medical issues. My point is, is this mask order by default is valueless because it's unmanageable. And that's probably the biggest context of my statement of this mask order. I, I agree with, with the sentiment of the public. People should have a right to wear it if they feel like it. To a certain extent, I feel like it's self mitigating. Businesses by default are in the business of mitigating issues. That's their, that's their lifeline, right? They have to prevent liability as a business. So that's the reality that they live in. I'd like those, those questions to be answered in more of a holistic fashion than just, we just need this mask order. So those are my comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Gilio.
Thank you.
Chair, let me make sure my microphone's on. The, recently I've been reading a lot about this. The doctor just mentioned all of them a lot faster than I could, but you have the WHO, the CDC, barrier health. The majority of the experts in this field are that I'm, that I'm seeing and reading. I try to read both sides and listen to both sides. And I definitely hear Supervisor Hernandez's concerns as well. And I have ran into people that have, have difficulty wearing a mask or a facial covering and, and, you know, there's, there's provisions in the order for that. So take a look at the WHO, the CDC. They're saying that these facial coverings are an important way. One of the things that I read, I'm sure there's, there's again, evidence on both sides of this, but there was a, I think it was in Springfield, there was a, a couple of hair folks that work in the hair industry that had, were COVID positive and they saw it. The numbers escaped me right now exactly, but about 140 clients and they were, they were both apparently wearing facial coverings the whole time. And, and I don't think they had any infections after they discovered that and went back and tested everybody. So there is a lot more coming out on, on the facial coverings. And frankly, it's confusing, right? Because in the beginning, everybody, the experts were saying, don't wear N95 masks and masks. And I, I think the message there was a little bit distorted because they were talking about, and doctor, this is a question, actually not just a rambling statement, by the way, but in the beginning, this is where my question is, they were talking about the masks and not wearing, specifically, I'm talking about masks, not face coverings, because they're trying to get these important N95 masks and masks that actually protect people as opposed to, like you said, you're wearing them to protect other people from particles that may escape your mouth when you're talking or coughing or sneezing, et cetera. And, and the, the reason for that was because we wanted them to go to medical professionals that, that absolutely needed them in the, in the, in the height of this. Is, is that an accurate statement or can you make any comments on kind of why the, the, maybe the inconsistencies from the beginning to now? Or do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. I agree. The messaging was very muddled early on. There was, if you remember back to mid-March, there was a very severe shortage of PPE for our healthcare workers. And we viewed that group in particular as being very vulnerable. If our healthcare workers became sick and could no longer take care of us in the hospital or on the streets, in the ambulances or fire, fire services, then we would be in real, real trouble. And so the initial, the initial recommendations were that the public should not be wearing medical grade masks, especially N95s, which are really reserved for aerosol generating medical procedures. The concern that it was, was medical procedures. A concern that it was, was that it would put further pressure on the supply for PPE for medical professionals. But as we've moved forward, the PPE supply has improved, and the, the understanding that even a cloth, a homemade cloth facial covering is effective, or is part of the layer of effectiveness for preventing spread, that's how this changed. But totally agree that the initial message was very muddled.
Thank you, doctor, and thank you for helping. Thank you for stepping in when we found ourselves without a health officer. I was reading some of the guidance, and I don't want to chew up too much time, because I know you have a limited amount of time, but we absolutely need to have a health officer for all the duties that you do other than COVID. COVID obviously is a new duty, and there's a lot more going on. So I appreciate you stepping in to fill the gap after we lost our first health officer. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Gilio. Supervisor Medina?
Good morning, doctor. Supervisor Medina. I am going to change direction a little bit. I'd like to talk in regards to a COVID-19 industry guidance that was released on June 5th, 2020. The subject is day camps. Now, my question here is, when we're looking at our high school sports, we're looking at, let's just call it local sports, being the Tremors, the Black Jacks, or any other organization we have, with this, with this standard or this guidance, are they able to participate in these actions?
Yeah, thank you for that question. This has been... A ongoing issue between the state health officers and the State Department of Public Health. We are eagerly awaiting guidance that's directed toward youth sports and athletic programs. We've had a number of organizations reach out to us for guidance on this, and we don't have much to offer, because there really isn't a state guidance on this yet. But I do think some basic principles apply. First of all, the state has categorically excluded youth sports from being permitted at this point. They've been very clear about that. But I do think there probably are some situations where it could be safely accommodated, and that would be, you know, small kind of stable groups, kind of like what we see in the day camp kind of thing, where there is not common touch equipment. So, you know, playing team sports itself often includes common touch equipment and gathering in close contact. But if they could do training drills where separation could be maintained in an outdoor setting, I think this could be safely performed. But I don't have any official guidance to offer yet at this point, but we are eagerly awaiting that.
So with, just with that, I want to be clear on this. If, for instance, to high school, if they wanted to have practice, no games, no touching, having a pretty good plan in place, with less than, I think it was 12 people per group, they would be able to safely and legally do this?
I think so. We've been relying on people to use their best judgment. We're not really in a position to scrutinize everybody's plan and provide, you know, an individual endorsement or approval, or even denial. But what we can do is offer the available guidance that's through the state, that includes general precautions and some of the safety factors that could be employed in there. So we're going to trust people's judgment on that, and I think that most people can make a reasonable decision about what would be safer, but not be safe based on that.
And the last one is dealing with youth sports. I mean, I know, I completely understand, and I agree with having other people come into our county and actually have games. I don't think that is wise. But is it possible for them to gather together and make sure all these protocols are in place, and have a pickup game, or practice, or throw the ball around? Because one of the ordinances, I did see that the governor does want people to play catch and things like that. So would that follow the same day camp premise?
Yeah, there have been, and I've heard this from other counties as well, there's been an attempt to try to adapt the day camp guidance to youth sports. I think there's some challenges there, but because of, you mentioned the mixing, like, between different communities, and obviously, the mixing between different households is a challenge there. Just thinking, let's think about Little League in particular. It's hard to imagine a game where you could physically separate people throughout the course of the game. Certainly, people are going to be gathering in a dugout. They will be maybe eating and drinking in the dugout. So very difficult, I think, to kind of control that. But it's conceivable that if you had a stable group of kids, and you had a stable, a single coach, and you weren't mixing those groups, that it would be possible for a smaller group to do that. But for two, you know, two teams to play one another in that situation would really kind of defy that definition of the, of the day camp.
And I agree with that comment. I'm just referring to practicing, and there'd be no games, there'd be no challenges. It would just be a team, let's just say, the Reds. The Reds will meet together, the coach will practice with them, but there will be no challenges between any other teams, and that's what I was referring to, sir.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's certainly possible. I have to say again that the state has categorically, categorically denied the ability to have team sports, but I think that you could probably put together a kind of training, training drills and so forth, where you could maintain separation. The, you know, if it's a batting drill, or fielding drills, or things like that, that could probably done with, be done with sufficient spacing. And then, of course, the coach would want to make sure that the kids didn't gather sort of before and after those, those events were happening.
And then my last question is...
I can just, I just want to just inform you really quick. Last night, I was on a call with CDPH and KAC, and they did send out some information that there was some question and answers, because we're not alone as a county inquiry about this. And there was a question regarding distance drills and conditioning activities allowed for youth. And the answer was yes, distance drills and conditioning activities are allowed, provided they comply with the gym and fitness center guidance. And so I've been communicating with several different sports entities, as well as high school, and sent them this information as well. But Dr. Gilarducci is referring to the youth guidance, there isn't anything else. But they did say yes last night. They were hoping that the guidance would be released soon. So it seems like guidance has been released in the last several weeks on Fridays. So, you know, guaranteed, but I'm hopeful that we will get something, as I know that it is a desire of our community, as was ours as a county. And so hopefully, add a little bit of clarity. So I encourage everybody to take a look at the fitness and gym guidance, and forwarded you the email as well, just so that you have a clear information.
Well, thank you very much, Tracy. I greatly appreciate conversing with you over the week. It probably made you a little bit mad at times, but I appreciate it. The last question I have is dealing with the parks. I know Vets Park being the softball and the soccer fields. If indeed, something comes out, a guidance comes out, would we be able to open those parks?
Yes, thanks for the question. Our ten is to go as quickly as the state will allow, and that's been our, our pattern since we applied for variance. So once those guidance is released, then obviously, I'll take them, I'll take a look at them. But I don't think there would be, it's very unlikely there'd be anything there that we would disagree with, and we would go ahead and allow those activities to resume.
Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Medina. Supervisor Gilio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Jim Gilio. Thank you for the clarification on youth sports, and Tracy, thank you. Great, great news. Very good news. And doctor, since I don't think we have Dr. Bogie today, do you have any update on the hospital for the, for the community? I've been asking and getting the updates, but I just wanted to see how the hospital's doing, and make sure that they're still doing okay with their, their supplies, their space, and all those things. Thank you.
Thank you. There may be some, perhaps Tracy could add more to this, but my understanding is the hospital's still doing okay. You know, the main concern is the number of hospitals it has, and then ICU capacity has been, you know, a bit concerned. My understanding is they're continuing to be okay at this point.
Thank you.
So, yeah, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions we have. Do you want to continue your presentation? Tracy or Ray?
Tracy.
Yeah, it's just a very brief presentation of availability. So if you could advance to the next slide. Just wanted to provide some current data. As indicated here, there are no hospitalized patients at this time. That's the good news. We did have four new cases yesterday out of the hospital clinic site. Nothing new out of OptumServe as of yesterday. Next slide. I do have our epidemiologist Mallory Schmidt on the call to, we added a new graph here. She's going to talk briefly on that and the next couple slides. So Mallory, go ahead.
Sure. So I did add this graph, the request somebody made, and it shows our positivity rate by week. I know we've talked about this before in the past, a week ago. But I just kind of wanted to make you guys aware that there is, you know, a little footnote there that it's based on the available data we have. So these are coming from verified results through CalReady. And so some of these numbers or rates may change slightly within the last three weeks, just because there is a lag time from some of these laboratories reporting into CalReady.
Thank you. Next slide, do you want to touch a paper on this too, sorry?
Sure. So I guess, coming from that positivity rate graph, this is just our numbers from our local OptumServe testing site. A couple of things to note here, I mentioned some of those pending results in that very far right column. The reason for some of that was pretty large. Some of it is due to the fact that there are many people actually getting tested here at our OptumServe site in Hollister that are not our county residents. There's actually a large, and the only thing is that we won't ever really receive the results or verify them through CalReady, because they're not our residents. So it's going to take some time for me to possibly clear that out and clean that data. Apologies, but it looks so messy, but there's only so much time in the day. Anyway, what else was I going to say about? I think that about, I really wanted to talk about all those pending numbers and what the reason is for them. Oh, also, there was, I guess, a glitch with the CalReady system and OptumServe requests having to report these results. So from May 27th to 26th on is where we started to see a large portion of these pending results happening, and we're still waiting for that. So waiting for them to retroactively go back and input these results, so that we can verify them through that CalReady system.
Thank you, Mallory. Next slide.
So that's it for Mallory. Thank you for presenting that information, and we're doing our best to continue to update our data and provide as much information as possible. There have been some inquiries from some of the board members and some of the public. If we could include certain things, then we're doing our best, just so you all know, to update as much information as we can. We just wanted to provide a brief update on the county variants. I think you're all aware that we did advance, expand stage three last week, and we will expand it again further this Friday to allow the personal care industries that require touching of a client's face, so facials, electrolysis, waxing, eyelashes, cosmetology services, nail salons, tattoo parlors, piercing shops, massage therapy, will all be able to expand on Friday. There's specific guidance to that industry, so we just ask that you take a look at the guidance, become aware of what the expectations are, and follow the guidance. Dr. Gilarducci already approved the expansion, and so as of this Friday, those industries should be opening up if they are prepared. Next slide. The following activities have not, we have not been provided guidance on. We touched on the youth camps, playgrounds. I know our big thing, people want playgrounds open, as do I, but we are waiting for guidance. And as I indicated yesterday, I was on a call last night with the state, and they are expecting the guidance to come out soon, but they will not commit to a date, which is unfortunate, but it's the reality for us. There is some guidance, just reminding that there are no, there's no guidance around gatherings, as well as musical or other performances or events. They're suggesting they can be canceled. There's, I just indicated that organized activities in sports, basketball, touching sports are not permitted, in the sense that they require coaches and athletes. But there is that discussion that we had regarding the activities that they can perform under the gym guidance. And they've assured us that that guidance should be coming out soon. So more to come on that as soon as we receive that. We'll ensure that we get it out to the public. Next slide. As a county, we're just recommending that you continue to follow the guidance and related to your industry activity. Self-certify with the placard in your business, so that the individuals that are coming into your industry are curious if you're following the guidance, that they will know. And just another reminder that as we move through, we will continue to monitor the data to ensure that we keep our county safe. Guidelines are all available on covid19.ca dev. I encourage you all to look at it. We've received calls regarding different things, and we're doing our best to help people find things in the guidances, because it is spread out. There were questions regarding our parks, and we referred to that regarding our swimming pools and stuff like that that are open, and there is guidance on this. So we're trying to do our best to help the community, the guidance that pertains to their industry, if it's available, and walk them through it. So that's it for me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tracy. Supervisor Medina?
Yes, I'm not sure if this is the time to say this, but it is COVID-19 related. Wanted to talk through the chair, wanted to see if we'd be able to take some type of a poll, or talk about opening up our quarters here for public to participate in these meetings in the future. And we, in the beginning, it was an ordinance from the governor, it still is, but we have the option to at least bring people in here, not to exceed 25% of the capacity. Is that correct, legal counsel?
Yes, you could.
You could open the board chambers, as long as social distancing is maintained.
I'd like to bring that up, and do we talk about this now? Do we agendaize this?
No, you can't talk about it, no. We'll put it at the next board meeting.
Well, the only question I have is, the reason why I'd like to talk to it now, it's not on the agenda, but we, it was just, we took the ordinance from the governor. We never voted on, you know, making it a, a weekly, what do you call it, like a weekly ordinance here at the county. So that's why I'm just saying, do we have to go through the formality, Barbara, or?
Unless there's consensus by the board, then you could agendaize it for the next meeting. If nobody, if every, if the board was directed, or just told staff to go ahead and open it at the next meeting, but if there's a difference of opinion, then maybe it should be set for the next meeting to have a formal vote.
Yeah, I would just ask my fellow colleagues that we just open it to the public, because I think it's important for transparency. Just wanted to see what everybody else thought.
Mr. Chair?
Hold up before I pull the board. So it doesn't require to discuss about it at the next meeting, it just requires opening it up at the next meeting. What'd you tell me, Barbara?
It depends what the board's preference is. The board could choose to keep it closed, or they could choose to open it. They could leave the decision to staff.
If the board decides to open it, what is the process?
Well, the board could just, if the board just tells staff to open it at the next meeting, then that's, that's it.
That's it. Okay. Before I pull the, before I pull the board, I will caution the board that I, it is better, from my perspective, to go to... that I, it is better, from my perspective, to go to two meetings. The first one is to, uh, is to hear the public, because not everybody wants to say, okay, let's pack it up, but it's 25%. Not everyone's gonna say that, and there's gonna be other people who are gonna say, you know, for the following reasons, I don't think it's wise to open it up, and then there's gonna be other members of public say it's about time. And if we don't afford that opportunity for the public to at least allow us to hear them, then we're really not providing, you know, good, you know, good transparency. So it's, from my perspective, before I pull the board, I think it's, do it to meetings. If it's gonna happen, it's happening. I'll support it, absolutely. Supervisor Medina?
Well, the question I have here, um, Chair, is they don't have to come to the meeting. It gets, it's still available by Zoom, number one. Number two is we never polled anybody when we went to the closed meetings either, so there is no difference.
That's true.
So the way I'm looking at it is, if up to 25% of the people that want to come over here can, number one. Number two is if you do not want to, it's still available by Zoom, and it will continue to be available by Zoom until the governor lifts that order. Is that correct, legal counsel?
Yes, we should keep it available by Zoom.
I feel very uncomfortable. It's because it's not on the agenda, and I'm surprised you're allowing this conversation to proceed, Barbara. But I will pull the board.
You know, if there's-
Move forward with it.
Yeah, I think that-
Let me pull the board.
Pardon?
Let me pull the board.
Can we have dialogue about it?
No, I'm not gonna allow dialogue on this. Um, I'm gonna pull the board.
Well, mine is relative, really. It's an important question, consistent with what, what Supervisor Medina mentioned.
Um, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna allow it. What I'm gonna ask is what Supervisor Medina has requested, that, that we open it up to the next board meeting.
Open it up to the next board meeting.
That's exactly the question I'm gonna ask. Other than that, I don't feel comfortable continuing this conversation. Even you, Barbara, that you are our county council, you're allowing us to go in that discussion. So Supervisor Hernandez, do you allow it to open it up at the next board meeting?
Yes, and this conversation is consistent.
Thank you. Supervisor Gilio?
Yes, I need to make one comment, that, um, the, the social distancing ability in this room, this is a pretty small room, and I'm counting the chairs that are available now because we had it set up that way originally. It's very, very, it's a very small amount. So, um, with that caveat, social distancing and facial coverings when you're within, we need to think about protecting our staff. I'm looking at the podium, and it's probably about two feet away, three feet away from Janet, so we're gonna have to reconfigure this and set it up to make sure that our, our team here is protected, and they don't feel uncomfortable by people coming in without facial coverings and getting too close to them. I'm thinking of, uh, them. I'm 100% okay with opening it up with those conditions. We gotta make sure we're safe. Thank you.
Supervisor Batello?
No, I, 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 I'm concerned about the, uh, health of our staff, and I, I think it's, uh, kind of a inappropriate, uh, topic for today, and so I'm, I'm, I'm a definite no.
Yeah, thank you, Supervisor. I, myself, I'm also no because of the same reason Supervisor says, and Supervisor Gilio has stated, that we don't know the logistics of it. But, uh, I think there are three votes on this board that we will open it up next week. And Ray, uh, per direction of the board, uh, you need to accommodate the safety and the protection of your staff, and also including the board supervisors, and we will open it up, up to the 25% capacity and with the recommendations that Jim Gilio has said earlier. If you'd like to say a little comments about that, I'll allow it, but if it's gonna go into a three, four minute discussion, I'm gonna have to put us off.
Mister Chair, just because there are a lot of details in this issue about whether masks should be allowed and not allowed if it was opened, the chair has the ability to also put this on the next agenda if you'd like to talk about it. The next agenda, it's not a universal, you know, wholehearted, uh-
Actually, that's a good compromise. That will be a very good compromise.
Yeah, thanks, Mister Chair. So, my question is actually to take it a step back. I mean, what does the current rules say when it comes to in-person meetings? I mean, really, if we're saying that we're trying to follow an order, that's, that's what guides it, and as far as I'm concerned, it does allow it, you know? Uh, so ultimately, it's protest, right? It gives people the right to protest. Wouldn't that fall under it, and we're at 25% capacity or 100 people? Actually, for indoor, it's 100 people. For outdoor, there's, that just got eliminated. So to be clear, with what Supervisor Medina has mentioned, it's consistent with the rules, which is exactly what this conversation is about. So I disagree with Supervisor Batello and, and, uh, and Dela Cruz that this is not consistent with the conversation.
Mister Chair, if we could put this on the agenda, just in abundance of caution. Normally, if it was all five members of the board and it was just referring it to staff, then I would feel comfortable with it being voted. You just deferred to staff to open it, but it is a controversial item. So if you could agendaize it for the 6/29 meeting?
Okay, we would do that if it's okay with the blessing of the board. We would do that.
So we're not, gonna allow it? We're gonna talk about it first?
We're gonna talk about it, but there's just so much logistics to it.
We just talked about it right now.
We can't. It's, it's not on the agenda, and it's, and I feel so uncomfortable even talking about it right now.
That just goes, I mean, I'm sorry to, sorry to be a pain, but that just goes, we didn't talk about it when we went to nothing. When we, when we poof.
The only, what I'm gonna allow it is, if there's enough votes on the board-
And there was.
-to direct staff to open it up next week.
There was. It was three to two.
So right now, there isn't enough votes to open it up.
Open it up next week, and also on the agenda, we're gonna put the logistics on it.
Yep.
We'll do that. Okay. All right, let's continue.
Yeah, I know, Mister Chairman, uh, next meeting, I'll be on Zoom.
Actually, as myself.
That's fine. And just, just for the record, the, uh, city council, they do, they are open to the public. Just, you know, so if you, if you want to talk to the city council, or the, uh-
City manager.
The city manager. Ask him how he did that. That might help out.
Yes, thank you.
Mister Chair, and for clarity, just so everyone is aware, the next meeting that we have is on the 29th.
On 29th?
9:00 AM.
Okay, then it'll be on the 29th. Yeah, okay. That's the wish of the board. I'm, I'm comfortable with that. Okay, so we're still on 27. Um, did already, did you, Supervisor Hernandez, do you have any? Oh, no, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I already made my comments.
You're still on, you're still on the floor, Supervisor Medina?
I got my part, because I'm happy.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Hernandez?
My next comments are the consent.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Batello?
Um, I'm fine.
Supervisor Gilio?
Fine.
Fine. Okay, um, now we're gonna go to puppet comment on this one.
Can I add one thing?
Yes.
Mister Chair. It came to my attention this weekend that the last time that the board extended the local emergency, the AIT indicated that, that it was being extended for 60 days. Now, under the executive order, once a, um, local emergency is declared, it actually extends. It does not terminate pursuant to the statute. Normally, it would have to be renewed, but one of the executive orders indicates that it continues until terminated. So the board is not obligated to come back and to renew that order because it is an existing order, and it will continue until the board terminates it. But in, if the board wanted to make, I wanted to make sure through the speech today that the board, that the public knows that that's continuing, that, that resolution for declaring a local emergency does continue. And if the board wanted to schedule that on the 6/29 meeting just to, uh, readopt it, that's the board's discretion. You're not legally required to do so, but, um, if you wanted to do so, um, just in abundance of trans, you know, just to make clear to the public that it's being continued, that's up to the board.
I would support that sentiment because it's about transparency, right? That's what we're talking about.
Wow. We'll do that. Supervisor-
Two for two.
Okay. Supervisor Batello?
That's two, Peter.
Yes.
All right, Supervisor, we're good? Okay, yeah.
Doesn't matter.
Put it on the gen- Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, public comments? And this pertains to number 27, Oni.
Is it, is the doctor still on?
Yeah, is his doctor still on?
I think he had a-
He had a-
He had a, okay. Just for the public information, the doctor's not on anymore. He had a prior engagement. Next speaker card.
Jeannie, if you could please state your name?
Uh, yes, Jeannie Wallace. Can you hear me?
Yes, madam.
Okay, thank you. Um, I am a longtime Hollister resident. Well, it's 26 years since, uh, and, um, member of the community. I, first of all, want to thank the board for, um, for the protections that have been put in place. Unlike the comments that I heard earlier, I completely support the, the mask order. Um, I'm concerned, in fact, about opening up too soon and the spike that we're seeing in cases, again, um, as a consequence. And I, I want to counter what I heard earlier. Um, there, there was, in fact, a study just released over the weekend. If you want to read it, it's been, it was published in Forbes, uh, June 13th, 2020. Um, it was a study, uh, cut out of a, a medical team, a research team, composed of researchers from the Texas A&amp;M University, the University of Texas at Austin, the California Institute of Technology, and UC San Diego. A team that, that specifically studied mitigating effects for COVID worldwide. Um, what they concluded among the things was that the disease is spread mainly through airborne transmission, not through touching of surfaces, although that is one avenue. Um, and a quote from their study, uh, "Among all the strategies for reducing transmission, wearing face masks may be the central variable that determines the spread of the virus." Um, in the study, they discussed the difference between face coverings as an order, uh, and this may be a separate study I was looking at, actually, but face coverings as an order versus just a strong recommendation. Um, when you make it a recommendation, people opt out of it. Um, and what I, I also want to mention to you that, um, there was a, an article released back in May, May 20th, if you're curious. It's the best one I've seen to understand the spread of the virus. It's by Dr. Aaron Bromage, B-R-O-M-A-G-E. Um, it's called "The Risks: Know Them, Avoid Them." Um, Dr. Bromage is from the University of Massachusetts at Dartmouth, and, uh, it really helped me to understand the impact of airborne transmission and how long airborne particles linger in a room. And you can be 100 feet away from someone, it doesn't matter because they linger, um, and the room becomes concentrated. And so the longer you're in a room with a person who has, um, an infection, the greater the risk to everyone in the room, regardless of their distance from that person. Um, so, you know, we get a false sense of security that if I'm more than six feet, I'm okay. That's not in fact true. Um, so the face masks are important. Now they're saying this most recent study, even for people who are wearing them, but most especially for people who are, um, avoiding infecting others, as I'm sure you're aware. Um, and so, uh, it, it needs to be in order. It needs to continue to be in order, and even though, um, many of the public are not showing up here to talk up to you about it, we do appreciate the efforts that you're taking to keep us safe. Um, and transmission is, can be high among people who have no symptoms.
Thank you.
So, um, thank you, and please keep-
Thank you. Next speaker card.
If you could please state your name?
Okay, first off, uh, my, my name is Crystal Holland, Hollister resident. And first, I'd like to start off reminding everyone that when the shelter place was first implemented, we were told it was for the healthcare system, not some manhunt to eradicate a disease. We wanted to ensure our hospital and healthcare workers were prepared and not overwhelmed. Here we are, three months later, and not once has our hospital been overwhelmed, and in fact, has slowed down, just as a majority of the country. Both hospitals we see overran and are overpopulated and under-resourced. They have always been overran because so. Now, back to our realities, again, empty hospital and staggering active cases of people just sitting at home. But sadly, the ripple effect of all this is hitting our children harder than ever. These orders you keep in place are affecting the way our school district intends to allow our children to go back to school. Our district is not experienced and does not have the proper resources to properly continue to give our children education through distant learning. So now, not only did you put many families out of business, but are putting our children's quality of education on a back burner. This is not only affecting their lives now, but it will ripple back into their futures. Their mental health is already suffering from lack of real connections with their peers. As I obviously see in my own 13-year-old daughter, she can't even go swing at the park, which is her mental outlet. She fears even riding her bike because she's been verbally attacked for being closer than six feet from someone. She's a child and not allowed to ride in the streets. People are gathering, and people are traveling. People are spending their weekends in bars, but my child can't go to school or the park? This is all so absurd. Other counties and other states seem to be getting along just fine without these silly masks and six feet rules, orders. They seem to be pleasant to be out in public, too. Again, this is evading our people and causing many people to think they're police, causing conflict with neighbors and even close family and friends. Many of our leaders continue to encourage this ridiculous and hateful behavior by pointing fingers of blame. The negative effects this will have on their community as a whole will be felt for many years to come. Parents have spoken out loud and clear over Facebook and other outlets, and they're continuing to be ignored. You claim to listen to the people? Well, it's time to stop this mess now before it gets worse. Lastly, these new research studies are in fact biased because they are done in a time of controversy. There are past studies that have shown that a mask actually increased the person who was wearing it's risk. So I should increase my risk and my health to make someone else feel better? And again, the definition of law is not guidelines and recommendations. Laws are supposed to be voted on in a proper manner, not just decided by one person who was not even an elected official. Thank you.
Thank you, madam. Next speaker.
Courtney, if you could please state your name?
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Um, I wish actually that you guys could see me because I am standing out in front of the San Benito County Administration Building. Never again will you tell me that I cannot come and speak. You've cut off the public comment, you've started the agenda, and you have once again confused and divided this community. I'm not gonna thank you or the public health officer for being there. It is your job. You get paid for what you're doing right now. The doctor talked about common touch equipment, doors handled, gas pumps, ATM machines, payment pads, fruit, so many things that we're touching around this community, common touch equipment, but yet our children can't throw a ball to each other? These are state guidance. You heard the doctors. These are our patterns. We follow the state guidance. I will not. My question is, what are you going to do about it? I'm going to run my business. I'm not going to socially distance. If somebody wants to hug me, I'm going to accept it. I'm going to read you my rights. My, my right based on is approach for meaningful participation. Participation means ensuring that national stakeholders, including non-state actors, such non-government organizations, are meaningfully involved in all phases of programming, assessment, analysis, planning, implementation, monitoring, and evaluation. You've taken over this meeting to only allow governmental organizations to take as many times as they'd like to speak their propaganda and, and bully the people of this community. The public health department is bullying these businesses, and like Tracy Belton said from her email from Gavin Newsom, these are guidance and they're strongly recommended. Guess what? I'm not doing it. What are you gonna do about it? I am here to represent myself and my voice at our county meeting, and I will come every single week. I am so disappointed with how you conducted yourself during this meeting and through this time. Shame on you.
Thank you, madam. Next speaker.
David, if you could please state your name?
Hey, this is Dave Patrick. Um, so, so you don't forget, uh, as I stated earlier, this emergency order is illegal. Uh, over the last three-plus months, we have witnessed a great deal, uh, too much. A lot of people will say more than we have ever seen in this country. Uh, but what exactly has happened in the last three-plus months due to our health office orders? Uh, canceled surgeries, canceled doctor visits, canceled visits to our elderly loved ones, canceled parent-teacher conferences, canceled weddings, canceled graduations, canceled sporting events, canceled flights, canceled charity events, canceled sleepovers for our kids, canceled school, canceled youth sports, canceled constitutional rights, canceled vacation, canceled jobs, canceled futures, and canceled rights. You have no idea what you, the elected officials, the free persons keeper, you have no idea what you have canceled by allowing this health department such power. You have helped cancel the American dream. For years to come, we will see the effects of this colossal mistake perpetuated on every citizen of this county, state, and country by unelected health officers. You were elected to uphold the Constitution, to protect the constitutional rights of your constituents. You have failed miserably by continuing to employ this health officer. We have a health official, Dr. Giladucci, a man that doesn't even live in this county, a man that has no loss if his orders have negative lasting effect. He hasn't even been to every meeting because he's got better things to do. Too busy because he's also working on ruining lives in Santa Cruz County with the, the complete publicity and trampling on constitutional rights. He keeps a mask order on us as forced respect. We cannot force him to respect us, but he has the full force of the law to force us to respect. And who is it? He and four of you demand we respect? You want a bailout payday, but you won't achieve that goal unless you carry out the dictator's rule, and that's what this is really about, money. Money will be flowing out of your school districts because of this health officer and health department. Masking children as a forced respect, diminishing oxidants to their lungs, taking away facial expression, causing lung ailments due to dirty masks. This health officer must go, and this order is- This health officer must go, and this order is illegal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Irma, if you could please state your name.
Hi, my name is Irma Gonzalez, and I'm speaking to you here because just yesterday there were 87 hospitalizations in Salinas. Our patients go to Salinas. You're not seeing them here at Hazel Hawkins Hospital. I want to make sure that you and the people listening understand that. This hospital is not overwhelmed because they are going somewhere else for their healthcare. And the reason the information keeps developing about the vi- the virus is because we know so little about it, and there's so many resources being expended at this time to try to find new information and release it to the public. Opening to the public, this is where I'm really upset, and I'm going to try to stay calm. Opening yourselves to the public is putting your own employees and staff in danger. You know, you know, you have a vital number on your staff right now, sitting in that room with you. That is immune compromise. You have a duty to protect your employees and staff members. There's certain pre-existing health conditions that are more serious and provide more serious cases of the COVID-19. People who have survived breast cancer, prostate cancer, adults who survived childhood leukemia, and so on. That is what I am really upset, this is what made me call in. You know who you, who you have on your staff, and yet, mark is it? You want to allow the public in? This public that doesn't want to wear masks? This public who doesn't care about themselves, doesn't care about others? So you're going to put your employees at risk? That is not acceptable. I am totally upset with this whole idea of putting people in, and I agree with, uh, Supervisor Della Cruz. This is not something that can be done. And Supervisor Hernandez, I'm really upset with you also. You know that you have an employee that is autoimmune compromised, sitting right there next to you. And yet, you don't care? You, you're more concerned about impressing the public with your views? I'm sorry, your employees come first, your staffs come first. Their health and safety should always be on the forefront for you. Yes, you are elected. Yes, you cannot be, we can go out and you can get not elected in the future. Right now, I'm, I don't care about that. I care about employees, I care about staff, I care about their safety, I care about science. And yes, science is real, even though some of you continue to persist in saying that it is not real. So, in closing, I just want to say, opening yourselves up to the public? You are putting your employees at risk. You are putting a very important employee and a dear friend of mine at risk. So I have to speak out and say, no, please, do not do that, do not do that. It is wrong. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hunter, if you could please state your name.
Hunter Cunio, San Benito County. Uh, can we please get verification on that claim that the last caller just made? That our hospitalizations aren't counted because our patients are being transferred to Salinas? Because I, I was told the complete opposite. I was told that only hospitalizations counted are, uh, it, where, no matter where they go, they're counted as our hospitalizations. So please, someone verify that claim today. Um, because it, there, there are zero here in our hospital. We're giving these daily reports on new reported cases. Three new cases yesterday, one new case today. Let's make it clear your objective is now the complete eradication of this coronavirus. Our own mayor explicitly even said this. This is not a local health emergency and it never was. Here we are three months later being told that now we can go some places as long as we are muzzled and masked, maintaining distance, and only with members of our own hospital. We are not accepting your lockdown light any more than we accepted your complete house arrest a couple months ago. What is going on here is fraud. You guys continue to enforce a local health emergency when there are no grounds for it. According to California Emergency Services Act, a local health emergency may only be proclaimed by a local health officer when there is an imminent and proximate threat of the introduction of any contagious or communicable disease, chemical agent, non-communicable biological agent, toxin, or radioactive agent. Based on that definition, there are no grounds for a local emergency in our county. There is no imminent threat, there is no proximate threat. You need to get rid of this public health officer, terminate the local health emergency, and terminate this mask order. I couldn't believe what I was hearing earlier when members of our board were asking one elect, unelected bureaucrat if and how kids can play catch or practice a sport. That was embarrassing. So this one guy has been given complete power and authority over when and how we can open an economy, when and how we can publicly practice our religion, what we have to wear on our faces, when and how we can visit friends and family, when and how our kids can attend schools, when and how our kids can play a sport. And four out of you, four out of five of you see nothing strange about this or how un-American it is. You guys just say the pledge of allegiance because you think the American flag has pretty colors? We don't want to comply with these immoral dictates or being called selfish, but robbing our youth of adolescence, which is such a short and important time in their lives for development as healthy and productive human beings, so that older folks don't have to be bothered with finding a virus that has a 99.8% survival rate. I work with many young athletes, and I can tell you that them missing out on just one sport season or normal school year would change the trajectory of their lives and potential future in sports at a higher level. So we're robbing them of their dreams and aspirations.
Thank you, sir.
We have no more public comment. If you wish to make a comment, press star nine or raise your hand. Donna, if you could please state your name.
Hi, this is Vaydana Freitas, resident of San Benito County.
Yes, madam.
Every week I, thank you, every week I come on and I'm, I'm literally just amazed that our leadership does not understand that the great majority of people do not agree with you. They're angry, they don't feel protected, they're resentful. They don't go to businesses as much as they can because they don't want to wear their mask and they don't want to have confrontations. This is creating problems amongst all the people in this community. It is hurting our businesses economically. We have no state of emergency. The doctor contradicted himself on several points. And I don't need to hear science and studies claiming all these points of view. I don't need to be told to follow the science. The reality is that there are science and studies that directly contradict whatever anyone wants to bring up. Okay? The law of nature is herd immunity. It's not a scientific belief, it's not a matter of political belief, it's not a matter of policy. It is what it is, it's how human beings have survived all the viruses for thousands of years. And when you keep people in their homes and muzzle them, you're telling us that you're killing off this virus and you're protecting us, and all you do is flatten a curve, but you also widen it. And the sooner everybody gets out, gets healthy, has fresh air, and can kill this virus with soap and water, by the way, what are we afraid of? Now, Ms. Irma is doing enough caring for all of us, thank you for that. But she is making the point here, if you guys have an employee who is susceptible, that person should not be at work because we don't want anything to happen to anybody. The people who are susceptible not well, they need to be home. But the other 99% of the healthy Americans, they need to be out, living their lives and supporting this economy and helping to take care of those 1% that need us. Now, this doctor said this was a rogue, this is not a rogue order. It is. Less than 10 counties have mandatory mask orders out of the 58 in California. Less than 10. There is no reason for us to have a mandatory mask order. We don't have the numbers. He says this is the layer of protection for employees, great, those employees can choose to wear a mask. He says there's no medical basis to reverse this? There was no medical basis to impose this in the first place on April 27th, after going through five months of living with this flu. So I want to urge, remove the mandatory mask order and let people choose from themselves how to live their life.
Thank you, madam.
Elia, if you could please state your name.
Good morning, Elia Salinas. Thank you for taking my call. I want to, uh, reiterate what, uh, Irma Gonzalez said. Uh, and I find it offensive that the last speaker, Freitas, would say that the person who, uh, autoimmune system has been, uh, impaired would suggest that that indiv- individual shouldn't be at work. So now, these people who are willing to put people at risk because they don't know whether they're carrying it, are now saying that a person shouldn't come to work because of the situation that they're, that they're in, that their health thing? You don't dictate, uh, someone that, that they're going to, how they support themselves and their, and their career. You don't just cut it off because you decide that they shouldn't come to work because their immune system is, is compromised. Uh, we also have two board members that they're, they're, are, are at high risk. And I understand why, uh, they are reserved as to wanting to allow the public to come in. The, the general public may not be aware of their, their, their health status, but some of us are aware of it, and we respect the fact that they want to have the distancing, the physical distancing, and the wearing of the face coverings. And, um, I would like to point out that it's amazing that all these people that are constitutional rights have been violated. They would not have made it. The, these people would not have volunteered during World War II to go out and sacrifice their lives for their country. But here they are, 70 years later plus, saying that they love their country and that they don't want to wear a face covering because their constitutional rights are being violated. It is just so selfish of them. And let me remind the public out there that have spoken today and that have been able to operate their businesses because they have a following and their businesses were not essential, and they received PPP money. That money was illegally accepted when you applied for it. You knew you were still operating, and that information is going to become public. And I will make sure that you are prosecuted because you took that money illegally. Now let's get back to the basics and science and facts, and that's what the board is trying to do. From the very beginning, it is based on science, facts, and data for the benefit of the entire community. The numbers are increasing, the numbers are not decreasing. Arizona, night up to 93% increase. They don't wear face coverings, and they're so proud they're being out there. Now they're at 93% capacity.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Kevin, if you could please state your name.
Kevin Barcellos from Hollister. Once again, I'd like to thank the board, uh, for continuing, uh, the mask ordinance. Uh, would urge you to, uh, to follow the doctor, Dr. G's advice and, uh, and extend the mandatory order. Um, you know, the argument that there is no emergency because the, the, you know, there's, we don't have any hospitalizations, uh, and that proves the fact that we don't need a mask order is a little like saying, hey, you know, we haven't had any gas stations explode, so, so therefore we should allow everybody to smoke while they're, while they're at the pump. Um, the, the virus is circulating, it's kind of bubbling below the surface. From all indications, uh, it's, it's, uh, if it's expanding, it's, it's expanding slowly. But, um, the minute we kind of let, let our foot off the accelerator, it's gonna, it's gonna bounce back. And we have 10 available beds at Hazel Hawkins, and not a lot of room for, for a spike. So, um, so again, in, in closing, just want to, again, urge the board to continue the mask ordinance. And, and I want to thank the community, uh, who by and large, you know, I would say 80 to 90% of the people that we see out in public are, are masked and do support this, uh, this ordinance, whether or not they, they show up at these meetings on a weekly basis. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you could please state your name.
Hey, my name is Tiffany Martin. I am a resident of San Benito County. Um, and I'm just calling, I, I've been listening to a lot of the people that are calling in, um, that are offended or angry about people not wanting to wear masks. Um, at the end of the day, your health is your personal responsibility. Government was not created to protect your health, it was created to protect your rights. Um, I don't feel that making masks mandatory is, is okay. I think you do have a choice on whether you want to wear that mask or not, but I don't feel, um, that it is okay for the government to tell us that we have to wear them. I, I just, I, I don't understand, the, the science, everybody's saying the science and the data. Um, the science and the data changes by the minute. Um, first it was not okay to wear masks, now you have to wear masks. Um, and again, um, what was previously stated, there's, out of the 58 counties in the state, there's a handful of counties that mandate that you wear the mask. Um, that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
How do I know when it's my turn?
If you could go ahead and make your comment and state your name. Beth, you have been unmuted.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi, this is Beth Carbone. And the only reason I'm speaking up, um, because, well, let me say, I'm only speaking up because I want you to understand that there are many, many more people other than those who've been consistently speaking up that are against the mandatory mask and the delay of opening up San Benito County. I apologize to those who have consistently been fighting on mine and others' behalf that I have not spoke up earlier. I have not done so because I feel our voices are falling on deaf ears and nothing is changing. I'm only speaking out today to make sure you're aware of many others like myself who have, who feel the same, who feel that speaking up is simply futile. It doesn't matter how I feel or what statistics are given. There's a lot of emotion involved, and I just want you to know that I'm finally speaking up to, to make you aware that I'm against this as well. And I do thank those who have consistently been standing on my behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, madam. No more?
No, there's more. Um, for some reason, it's not allowing us to have a meeting.
Okay.
So, so it looks like her version of Zoom is older, so it wouldn't allow us, we have the promoter to have you.
Got the promoter?
Yeah.
Good morning, this is Erin Livingston.
I'm sorry, and you are?
This is Erin Livingston, 22-year resident of San Benito County.
Okay, go ahead, madam.
Since I have already sent a letter to the board regarding my feelings, I have no intention of speaking today. However, as I sit and listen to the double standard in the community and on this board, I cannot stay silent. To say that opening meetings to the public puts your staff at undue risk is infuriating. There are many public and essential businesses that have been open the entire last three months during this pandemic. You want to be sure that law enforcement, school employees, public works, city government, healthcare are open and available so that you and the public access their services, but you want to be open and available to the public that elected you. As an HR professional, I know there are many leaves available to employees who have health issues that make them more susceptible to, to disease. Additionally, your doctor stated that you can trust the public's judgment regarding youth sports, but you will not support our using our judgment regarding masks, social distancing, et cetera. The contradictions on this board never cease to amaze me. You're concerned about mixing with people from other communities for children to be able to play sports, but the same thing happening in a retail location or a restaurant doesn't- able to play sports, but the same thing happening in a retail location or a restaurant doesn't concern you. We also have not addressed the fact that statistically, children do not get sick from COVID-19, and those that do, recover. I'm stunned that this board isn't hearing the overwhelming voices of the public and fighting for our county residents' rights to send our kids to school without dystopian rules that will harm their mental health and rob them of their childhoods. You cannot force respect. Your mask order is dividing your community. Guilting people into believing that they are personally responsible for the health of all their community members is unfair. Those that have legitimate concerns should be wearing an actual mask that protects them, or they should be staying home. You are elected to protect our choices and our rights, and I and many other of your constituents are becoming more and more disappointed with each passing week. Thank you.
Thank you, madam. No other public comments? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board level. Okay, that concludes number 27. Now, we'll go back to the original agenda position, that is, public comments. So is, do we have any, anyone from the public on public comments, on items not on the agenda?
We do have one comment, and it looked like she had logged off. Her name's Jackie Moore, she's available.
As long as it's not what's on the agenda, and it's not about 27, because we already discussed 27. And I closed the public on 27. So now, we're open for public comments.
So Jackie, go ahead, and if you have a comment, go ahead and start now.
Yeah? So we don't have any, no one from public comments then? Okay, I'm gonna move on? Dulce?
Yeah.
Move on? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you. Now, we'll go to executive directors' report, right? Or department?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, board. Yeah, we've had the privilege to be able to move forward with the Great Plates Program, and I wanted to have Chris Mangano actually give your board an update of the Great Plates Program. Chris?
Good morning, board, thank you. A little update on Great Plates Program, the purpose of the program is to help seniors and other adults at high risk from COVID to stay home and stay healthy by having meals delivered to them, and to provide essential economic stimulus to local businesses struggling to stay afloat during COVID. And we have successfully enrolled 165 seniors, we have seven restaurants onboard, and we have served just over 5,000 meals locally, which I think is just outstanding. Statewide, the program is doing very well. Statewide, it has served over 27,000 seniors and over 1 million meals. The program does end on July 10th, but we are out there every day giving people their hot meals.
Mr. Chair, I wanted to add too, that the program was labeled at first for one month, again extended to June 10th, and now has gotten extended again to July 10th, so it's been a really good program. Thank you, Chris, and the team for working on it.
Good job to the staff and everyone for doing a wonderful job and helping those in need. That concludes your department reports?
Yeah, that concludes. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Gilio?
I just want to say thank you to Chris and the total admin team. This was a, it was a feat, there was a lot of work to get this program up and running initially, and I really want to thank you for that. We've not only done a lot of good by providing meals, but we've also helped invigorate and kickstart our restaurants before they were able to open back up a while back, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Supervisor Gilio. Any other questions to the CEO? No? Okay, thank you, Ray. Now, we'll go to board announcements. I'll start with Supervisor Hernandez.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So yeah, I'll try to keep my board reports brief. I've shared some info about the homework that I've done when it comes to this rollout with the shelter in place, but outside of that, the meetings that I've had, you know, we'll talk about it, actually, it's on the agenda right now, the last item when it comes to the CARES Act. And then also, you know, we had another kind of meeting with the COG Board, well, basically, me, the mayor, and Mary Gilbert, and trying to understand a little bit of kind of the dissemination of that study that was done, so I wanted to just basically share, it sounds like there's some exciting news coming out with moving forward on this, on, you know, not only the funding, but even the decision-making we eliminated with the trade corridor. Well, at least it sounds like there's a little bit of consensus to kind of talk about what it means to get, to eliminate one of the items on the trade corridor, or one of the routes. And, you know, I think the biggest takeaway that I wanted to share is there is a focus, not only to deal with our impacts of our traffic, 25, which is our commuter traffic, but also consistently with that, trying to deal with what it means to encourage economic development in our county, which is very much needed. And then, I would say, the final element is ultimately trying to have consensus, not only with the city and the county, about what those impacts mean. So, you know, outside of that, if anybody has any other questions, you know, you can email me and contact me about it. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Hernandez. Supervisor Medina?
Nothing there.
Thank you, Supervisor Medina. Supervisor Patel?
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anyhow, as Supervisor Hernandez pointed out, we continue to have the roadmap to recovery ad hoc meetings with the two cities, and I know, just from the discussion so far this morning, and we have a long ways to go yet as far as discussions, Supervisor Hernandez and I have been working with staff as far as putting together the presentation a little bit later on this morning on the CARES Act, and kind of a draft, you know, overview of how we hope to proceed through the summer. We'll talk about that later. But one of the things that I think, you know, we've talked about some real hard issues this morning, face mask, no face mask, open the public to the chambers, or not to, in the wisdom of that. And, you know, the shelter in place is confusing to us here locally as it's being laid out by the state, and the impacts that it has on the whole community and our young people not being able to play, you know, team sports and things like that. And, you know, I think we're all concerned about, you know, the impacts of the decisions that are coming down from the state. You know, these aren't, San Benito County is not an island, we're a part of a state, and we got to follow, you know, the guidelines that the state is passing down to us. And it's frustrating, you know, it's pointed out that we don't have a lot of people in the hospital, but there's a lot of people still getting sick. And I think that's a, you know, continues through the whole year. But one of the things that, in the meeting from the ad hoc, that was a concern, that I've had conversations with, and what's been discussed, is enforcement of, you know, not, it's getting easier because more businesses are open, they really are. I don't know if there's too much that's closed now. But going forward, you know, what kind of enforcement do we have for activities that is still not allowed by the state? We don't have a whole lot of ability, and I think this is something that, as we continue to make hard decisions and have hard dialogue, that we should hear from, you know, the Health Department, code enforcement, include the two cities' concerns, to generally maintain, you know, what we're trying to accomplish here and protect public health and well-being. And that is what I've been advocating for a long time, even out of planning, and ordinances that we have in everyday, you know, function of local government and why we have codes and things. We have to do a better job of enforcement. You know, we're going to have a concert, I guess, you know, I'm not gonna call it a protest or a rally, that's all bullshit, and we know it. But call it a protest, we'll have some music, have some fun, but what's the ramifications of that to the public good? And it's to line people's pockets, and it is about money. But, you know, I think there should be consequences to that. But that's my opinion, and I think we should discuss how we're going to have enforcement at some point in the future. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So you're requesting the chair consider something in the future?
Yes, that's my request of the chair.
Okay. Supervisor Gilio?
Yeah, so the, this, I just wanted to give a couple of quick announcements. One was Great Plates, great news, and then if people were tuning in late, one of the things that we have, the health officer approved yesterday, was the new guidance for in-person, personal services are calling it, which is, you know, the estheticians, tattoo, nail salons, and those sorts of things. So with that, what I want to say is that San Benito County has been, again, going back, and I've said this several times, and I'll repeat myself one more time, I hate to repeat the same thing week after week, but I will. We've been on the forefront of protecting our community, number one, and then, once we had health officer transitions, it slowed us down a little bit while we were transitioning, but we were on the forefront of reopening. Supervisor Hernandez and Supervisor Patel have graciously, and all of our team members, see our staff, has held multiple public meetings with different sectors of business. I'm not sure if you're calling them public meetings or seminars, or what the term is, but we've had a bunch of communication and contact. Supervisor Hernandez and I had a town hall meeting that was very well-attended, and these were when times were much more uncertain than they are now. And as Supervisor Patel mentioned, there's not much in San Benito County after Friday that is not available to operate with some, what I believe are reasonable restrictions and safety measures in place. And that's the key, is we're continuing to move forward. We jumped in and protected our community quickly, and I'm talking about our Health and Human Services Agency. We're on top of everything, communicating the dashboard, that we're getting out as much information as frankly I think we can, and actually, other counties are modeling our behavior with the town halls that Supervisor Patel and Supervisor Hernandez are hosting. And we're getting there, we're moving as quickly as we possibly can. I'm so glad that we don't have anybody in our hospital. I will be looking into whether or not our, and learning more about whether or not people from our community are transferred to other hospitals, and that doesn't count. I hadn't heard that until today, so I'm gonna look into that. But these are things that are happening, and again, after Friday, there's not a whole lot more that is not open. And then, one of the things that, in the future, Mr. Chair, that I would like the Health and Human Services Department to clarify a little bit, is the school, county, state interaction. I brought this up last week, we had a bunch of, or several, public comments, I took notes on the comments, and at least three, I think three or four people mentioned schools, and I think overwhelmingly, everybody's concerned about schools and what that's gonna look like when it opens, and we need to just make sure that that relationship's clear. Is a school going to create a safety plan and then send it to the board, the Health Department at the county? Are they gonna be interacting directly with the state and the State Board of Education? What about when we, again, this is all mentioned last week, and I'm just mentioning it again, what about when we get a complaint, and perhaps somebody calls the sheriff's office, or they call the police department, and they say, hey, XYZ is happening at the school, I don't feel it's safe, what's going on? Who's gonna deal with that? Is that gonna be the Health and Human Services Agency? Is that between the school and the state? That's my personal belief, based on reading the regulations, that we are just there if the school districts want that interpretation. And I understand that the county superintendent of schools is meeting with the superintendent of all the different schools and providing this guidance, but I think perhaps we can get it out at our meetings as well. I know they are as well. I listened to a board meeting from the Hollister School District, and I've also talked with the county Office of Education Superintendent of Schools, Crystal Lamont, I talked to her. So I know that they're communicating internally, but if we have more people perhaps listening to our meetings, maybe we can get a report out at our next meeting about how that structure's gonna work, and I think that will help with some clarity in that situation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I don't have much to say.
Mr. Chair, I forgot to add just one thing. I know that there was sentiment, and actually, it reminded me Supervisor Gilio, that to be invited to these conversations with the school, I never got the invite. So, just for clarification, we're wanting to talk to the schools, and you guys nominated me as the person, the point person to talk to them? I never got the invite. So just for clarification.
Can we make sure that that doesn't happen, and Supervisor Hernandez is invited? We appreciate, I know it's not our jurisdictions, the schools are a different political group, but I think professional courtesy invitation would be worthwhile for Supervisor Hernandez. Thank you, Supervisor Hernandez, for bringing that up to our attention. Okay, I have nothing to report, but we do have a lot of changes on consent. We're going to, we're going to, per member of the audience, we're going to move item number 16. Also, number eight, Supervisor Patel will abstain?
Yes, I'm abstaining as my sister is Veteran Services Officer, eight.
Number eight. Supervisor Patel is abstaining for number eight. Someone from the public has requested that we pull out number 16, and also Supervisor Patel has requested that we pull out number 17, and I'm actually supporting Supervisor Patel on number 17, too. Any other items at the board which to pull? Supervisor Gilio?
No, sir.
Thank you. Supervisor Medina?
No, sir.
Thank you. Supervisor Hernandez?
No.
Thank you. Okay, let's, is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, Gilio motions to approve the consent agenda, as you mentioned, with Supervisor Patel abstaining for number eight. Number 16 will be pulled for discussion, and number 17 will be pulled for discussion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Hernandez. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Okay, we would do number eight first?
The vote could reflect that that was 5-0, except for number eight, which was 4-0 with Supervisor.
Perfect. That solves discussing number eight. Okay, now we'll go to number 16. A member of the audience, is a member of the audience still there that wished, that pulled out number 16?
Yes, she is.
She is?
Mm-hmm, Madonna.
Can you tell me the name of the person?
Madonna Freitas.
Yes. Ms. Freitas, would you like to speak to number 16?
Madonna, if you're there, could you please unmute yourself?
I apologize. I was on my phone and couldn't unmute it, had to run to the computer. Yes, on item 16, I wanted to speak against automatically, want to speak against actually renewing and extending the contract against the health official. I think he contradicted himself many times, but first and foremost, he is not available to the he is not available to this county. He doesn't come to the meetings. I think that disqualifies him, like, in an air. And he, we've had to move meetings around to accommodate him to be here. We've had to move the agenda around. I think some of the people that intended to be here are speaking for anticipating that being in the first 15 minutes and might have missed out. And so we're having to accommodate, accommodate this guy and he's not able to show up and do his job. That's one thing. The second thing is that, I'm going to hand it to Ms. Tracy because she's been on top of it. She knows the numbers in the county, he does not. She was able to process moving us up quicker and a schedule to get open. He was not. She was able to correct him today about some of the schools, or update him, shall I say. Tracy's all over it, our doctor is not. He's getting money to show up when he feels like it or when he can. And I don't think he understands the impact that is having on the community. And I'd rather see us get a, either not have a public health official or get somebody who's in a small county understands the challenges that we have. So I think he's disqualified from even being part of the conversation because he's just not present. And I also understand that he's very much disliked in Santa Cruz County. And I believe that Courtney can speak to that. She witnessed some of the talk over there. Recommending against pursuing a contract with Dr. Gilidurci.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Freitas. I'll bring it back to the board. Okay, Supervisor Hernandez, I think it was also you that wanted to discuss that one.
Yes.
You have the floor Supervisor Hernandez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I want to premise it with something that we actually made a decision just a month ago, my comment, so, and it was actually with the consent of the board. We supported a letter where we wrote to the governor asking him to basically consider opening us up sooner. And, and we had, you know, obviously considering that, that we had the issues of surge capacity and, and, you know, all, all the things that we were expected to mitigate, you know, addressed in, in the context of, of what we're doing as county leaders. So with that said, we supported three things that were, that I asked for a friendly amendment for and Supervisor Medina supported it. And he actually asked for us to each individually sign it. So our, our names are individually on there. And those three things are really the consistency of what this contract in my mind should mean, is we supported protecting public health, definitely. But we also expected that we protect our economy and our constitutional rights. And so, so I'm, I'm going to stay within the context of the contract. But even in referencing Supervisor Patello's comments, I'm really trying to understand why you would take that posture when you didn't just a couple of weeks ago when there was a protest happening? And you didn't make it very clear that you were, you know, that you're trying to protect public health within the context of that? Not, I'm firmly supportive of protests. I, I, I'm glad it happened. But, you know, we had a doctor, we had our doctor just speak last week. I asked him a lot of questions. And one of the questions I asked was actually relative to what was priority when it came to public health protections. And that was, social distancing is number one. Now, I don't know if you went to that event. I did. And there was little to none when it came to social distancing. Everybody, most people did have a mask. So there was an intention and they tried really hard to, to, it sounds like, to make sure that it was peaceable. That was probably the big, one of the big focuses. But there was no, there really wasn't social distancing. And he spoke, he spoke very clearly that wearing a mask does not guarantee non-infection. That's why social distancing should be number one priority. That was his clear statements. My biggest point with that is, is we're officially making decisions in a vacuum. You know, we firmly believe that when we make decisions, we live in one lane and that one lane somehow doesn't affect the next lane. You know, we're so focused, you know, as we should be on public health, we're assuming that they're, just by focusing on rules that are going to protect infection, that they're not going to have other impacts that won't create another issue when it comes to communicable disease. You know, I've asked the question before and we haven't had it answered. You know, what happens when you are that business owner that basically shutters its doors and now cannot afford to keep its doors open? And therefore is ultimately in a position where they can't even, they can't not only take care of their, their rental property, but they probably can't even take care of the mortgage? Maybe they, they have to cut back on their health insurance? Maybe they all of a sudden have to figure out ways to, to basically be a lot leaner and not even care for themselves, right? We had, we heard Dr. Bogey even speak on Through Benito Link just recently where he mentioned that, that now we're seeing a, a different surge. We're seeing people with stroke conditions or heart attacks. We're seeing people with, with, you know, basically they're avoiding annual checkups because they're afraid to go to the doctor. And we didn't address that, right? There's no mitigating factors for that. So I, I'm just, I'm trying to do my best, honestly Supervisor Patello, to keep unity. And I think those comments do the opposite. I think they discourage unity. It's, it's, you know, there was assumptions made with your statements. I don't think they were wise because ultimately you're saying it's, it's pretty obvious people are doing it for financial gain, right? They're very selfish. That's why they're doing it.
Yeah.
That's your sentiment. I, I completely disagree. And I think by default it discourages it. But when it comes to this contract, nonetheless, there's, there's a very clear statement within that contract that I struggle with. I hugely struggle with, and that contract statement. So this is kind of ultimately, in my mind, it's a strong breach of our authority, our responsibility. And it's under item number five of the actual contract, professional ability of contractor and standards of performance. So it's item A. So it says, "Services shall be provided by contractor without the advice, control, or supervision of the county. Contractor shall have sole discretion and control of contractor's services and the manner in which they are performed." In a nutshell, basically what that tells me is, we have no say with what the doctor does and we're giving them fiat authority to make legislative decisions about the impacts of not just public health, but even our economy and even when it comes to our constitutional rights. We are breaching and it's a violation of our own authority to hand that over to him without addressing it. I appreciate Supervisor Medina trying to address it when it came to in-person gathering. That makes sense. In my mind, that means he's considering the public sentiment, addressing constitutional rights and their voice, voicing their opinion. So I, bottom line is, I know we need a health doctor. I'm not disagreeing with that. But I don't agree with our current relationship with the doctor. I firmly believe we need to make, our decisions need to include those three things and how he, he administers that. By default, that means we have to have an accountability component as supervisors where, where we're able to talk to him and say, look, we don't agree with you doing it just that way. Or at least weigh in, right? And it's, it's trying to make sure we're not disconnecting our representation responsibility. It's our responsibility to represent the people. And if we just hand it over to a doctor and according to that contract, we have, we'd be literally severed that accountability component. We agree, if I, as, as is, if we agree to violating our right, our, our authority, our responsibility to represent our constituents. So it's a one-legged stool. A one-legged stool can't stand by itself when we're just addressing it from one lane's perspective, as the wisdom of Supervisor Patello has mentioned. So, so I, I, I think there needs to be an accountability component. I think the damage to our county by this virus are obvious. But nonetheless, so is the shelter in place, which I've argued from the get-go. We need to have a conversation about that and include that, some language that requires us to address that. And then dissemination of information. We've had evidence today where our doctor basically said, hey, there's all this evidence going on with why we need to go forward with the mask order. And it was never even added to the agenda. That's information we should be able to disseminate ahead of time, right? So we know where his head is. And just the same, the public has that right also. So that didn't happen. So I want to make sure we have a clear process of transparency. And right now, we don't have it. And by default, we're actually encouraging to a certain extent the violation of that transparency. So for that reason, I don't agree with the contract and I will not support this contract. We need to change the, the language to support, in, in my mind, the sentiment of, of our duties to the public. Those are my comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Barbara, I've got a quick question before I go to the next supervisor. I, I got an email from you at 12 o'clock last night. Wow, you really work late. And I read it and I actually text you, call me, right? At 12 o'clock at midnight. Thank God you didn't, thank you. What was I thinking? And the reason why, because I knew Supervisor Hernandez was going to raise a lot of questions. That's why I wanted to prepare and ask you those questions late or early this morning. In your, in your memo to us, and it's open to the public, I imagine, or not, I don't know. But it doesn't, is that specifically the board of supervisors hires and fires the medical director, correct? But once we do that, or once the ink is dry, he or she now dictates, depending on provisions of the state of California, in case of emergency or disease, or like, I gave as an example, then he or she then becomes the, the person that dictates how it goes, right? Can we address some of Supervisor Hernandez's concerns? Not in this contract, but in, as amendments or agreements that the, the doctor, he or she will address the work? Because that was one of my biggest issue at first. And I know, and I know that Jim, Supervisor Gilio and myself, we have some disagreements that, you know, to what level should I be informed or not? He has some valid points. Should the board be informed at least 24 hours before? What Tracy or, or doctor's going to, you know, report to the board? Is it to our advantage to know? Is it something that we can work with them? Is there anything that we can work to build that better relationship and Supervisor Hernandez's transparency concerns? Can we, is there anything we can work on?
Yes, definitely. The, as the board is probably aware, that the board is required to appoint a health officer and it's a mandatory duty. But the health officer has a contract with the board that can be terminated upon 30 days' notice. Although we don't control the method and the manner of which he performs his duty, the board can request reports, information, et cetera. And if the board's not happy with the performance of that health officer, you can terminate the contract with 30 days' notice and seek a different health officer to perform, perform those duties. So for example, if you want him to give written reports before the board meeting, you can request that. And if that doesn't perform satisfactorily, you know, then you can have other options. You could draft some requirements into the contract if you want. Or you can just do a request for certain communication protocol, such as preparation of a written report. Requesting unless it's an emergency situation that certain notice.
Right, that's understandable. That's totally understandable. Ray?
Yeah, I just want to also to preface this with the board, just so the board has clarity. We were lucky to have Dr. G come in when, when he did, to be quite honest. We would not be actually at the stage we're at today where a lot of businesses have opened. Because we needed, we need a doctor to do that, to authorize that. That's the first thing. Second thing is, this is really an interim position. It's just a contract. It's just to hold us through until we actually hire somebody. We've actually have five interviews coming up. One already, one interview that's already occurred. And we hope to bring somebody on board soon. So I wanted to make sure that the board understood that we are in the hiring process. We, we need to have somebody here all the time that can actually attend meetings and be present when your board's asking questions. And so, again, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, he, he was kind enough to kind of come in. He's a busy, busy doctor. And, and do what he's doing. But still, you know, trying to do what he can to help us through this time. So I just wanted to make sure the board understood the whole picture.
And if I could reiterate two more points with the chair's permission. The state, it's really the state guidance that most people are concerned with. I mean, it's the state shelter in place. It's the state guidance that's been issuing. The only local restriction is the face mask order. Everything else has really been promulgated at the state level. And that's not the doctor's kind of, he doesn't have authority to change that. That is what's happening and being passed down from the state. And if you recall, I don't think that he gets enough credit in that he allowed the local shelter in place order to expire when he took the position. Prior to that, there was a, a local shelter in place order. So at the time where he took the position, he was taking a very progressive point of view locally. And, and I don't think people remember, remember that in, you know, in his defense, that he did allow the local order to expire.
Yes. Hold on Supervisor Hernandez. Actually, you still have the, the, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
So Barbara, so what I'm hearing.
Mike.
Turn your mic, Peter.
So what I'm hearing is, is in essence, the state order requires that we ultimately give up our authority as elected officials to a doctor. And by default, that means we're, we're defunct, no longer supervisors during this term of him being a, a, now officially an economist, a constitutional authority in his decision-making process. Because he's not even, in, in that sense, I mean, I imagine you do, you give him a little bit of help. But, but for the most part, it's his decision-making that makes those, that, that makes those decisions. So we become null and void as authorities in his, in his legislative process. Is that what I'm hearing?
There's different roles of, of different positions. There's different roles that, that parties play, just like the sheriff has elected statutory duties. I mean, I think that that's the closest analogy, even though the sheriff is an elected position and he's an appointed position. And so it's not that, that he's taking over the authority of the board, but he has specific mandates that he, as the public health officer, has to follow. And that's prevention of disease. And so looking at the different roles, there, there's sometimes, you know, there's sometimes tension between different roles. And that happens whenever there's different people fulfilling different, different functions. So I wouldn't word it exactly that way, but I do understand how there sometimes can be tension between different positions.
But so, so within the context of what you're sharing is you're agreeing that there's contradictions and those contradictions are left to the locals to deal with. And ultimately, we listen to the authorities above us. Whether the impacts are felt by them or not, it doesn't matter. We ultimately are the ones, the burdens bear, you know, basically we're, we're impotent in our ability to administer our duties because of the contradicting authority that's pandered down by the state. That's what I'm hearing.
Well, the state has declared it a matter of statewide concern. I mean, it is a state order and it affects all the, the counties.
Yeah.
And they are trying to administer this. It's a very difficult situation, as you can see from the evolving state orders.
Yeah, and, and I get it. I'm not, this is not on you Barbara. Obviously, your job is really hard in that sense to try to interpret what this means. But there's literally a collision course between the state and the local authorities and the way that these are implemented. Because now we're literally dealing with our, our authority as, as board of supervisors officially becoming void. We're useless when it comes to the implementation of this order. We've officially become null and void as supervisors. Because we have no authority to say, hey, you're impacting our economy. Thank you, but no, thank you, this is my decision. Hey, you're impacting our, our individual rights. Thank you, but no, thank you, we're not going to help you. That's our, that's your problem, not my problem. I'm looking at protecting public health because we live in a single-lane world, I guess. And whether these impact are felt or not, that's what I'm hearing, is it doesn't matter.
Barbara, but isn't it my understanding that we, we fire and hire the person? And, I mean, to me, I think he's doing an okay job. And I will continue to support the, the face covering. But if we're not happy with this individual, we could always fire the person, right?
That's correct.
But at the end of the days, our protocols at the state level, that in such an emergency, that person, because they're the medical experts, and we're no medical experts, we have said it many times over and over, we are not the medical experts. We are leader of this community, we try to lead as best we can based on our past experience. But when it comes to medical issues, the state of California, Pacifica states that the medical director's the one that's going to call the shots.
That's right.
Is there any, is there, is there any faults to that statement?
No, that's correct. That's correct. They have, he has certain statutory duties. The, 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 a governor has certain statutory authority. And, and that's, and the orders that he's promulgated, that's correct.
So the only issue at, at the table right now is either to retain or better yet, to fire or hire. Bottom line, that's the only thing, right? In terms of transparency, providing other, other documents, that's a, that's a side note that we could work with. Because we always have the caveat, you're not willing to work with us, we're going to fire you and hire someone else that will.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Medina?
Well, it was good to hear, Ray? It was good to hear that we have five interviews coming up for a full-time public health officer. And I don't mean to discredit the, the existing doctor. But how long have we been searching for a, a public health officer?
It's been some, it's been years, actually. And we've, we actually had the Dr. Marty prior. And we've been searching and searching until now. Hopefully, fingers crossed, we'll be able to hire somebody in this.
So we've been without a true public health officer for a couple of years?
I think it's a couple of years.
I think it's a couple of years, if I recall, yeah.
Well, thanks for, uh, not giving up on that and continuing to go down that road.
Yeah.
Um, you know, speaking with the contract, the contract, this is for an interim public health officer? Now, if we hired someone tomorrow, then would, do we still need to give him 30 days, or does that public health officer take over?
You would need to give 30 days, but even if you hired tomorrow, you'd have to normally have a period of time to, um, have that person transition to work, so, um, there would be a transition period where the prior person that you're hiring probably would give notice to their current job and come over here, and we would have to give 30 days' notice, unless, um, the public health officer, you know, waive that 30-day period of time.
Okay, and then the public health officer, if we hire a public health officer, he or she becomes the person that makes the decisions, not the existing interim public health officer? Is that correct?
Um, you know, I would think that you would wanna terminate this contract and have the 30 days lapse before you had the new public health officer take effect.
I just, I just wanna talk about this before it happens, rather than when it's happening or after it happens. So, okay, that's, that's my question. I, uh, I would go along with the contract as an interim until, uh, we hired someone full-time?
Thank you. Supervisor Medina, Supervisor Batella?
Yeah, um, you know, I, I, I get where Supervisor Hernandez has some concerns, uh, but, you know, at the end of the day, uh, the, the health officer is performing under, you know, California code, and has certain authority under California code, and he, he's not the only one, you know, it, there's, uh, the, the fire code, the state fire code, for instance, now it's required that every house be built with, uh, sprinklers. Well, I don't want my house built with sprinklers, it's my choice. I'll keep a, uh, extinguisher in my closet, it, I'll save about 10 grand. Well, it's not that simple anymore, and we have different bureaucracies, state bureaucracies infringing on our constitutional rights all day long, uh, in, in this state, and, um, I, I honestly like this doctor. I think he's done an exceptional job being responsive to this board and to the public. We have opened more businesses and our economy than most counties, or as fast as any county, um, and his job performance has been fantastic. We would be lucky to have somebody as responsive as, uh, uh, Dr. G. I'm gonna call him Dr. G. And there's just a couple of people that are upset about the face mask, uh, and, and that, that's really unfortunate. It turned out to be what I thought it would be, uh, but I, I think the overall public health, uh, good is there, and, you know, and it's really too bad that he's taken a lot of heat, but a lot of his colleagues in 58 counties are as well. I've been on this board long enough to know that you could have all these interviews lined up with five people, that it, that doesn't mean that real good, high-quality, uh, staff is coming and lined up out the door to work for Samuel County. Uh, we'll be lucky to get one, and, uh, in the meantime, I think this contract is fair, and, uh, especially in the times that we're in, and, so, um, you know, I just wanna state that for the public, that this is not easy, and we're, we're be, you know, looking to fill this position, but there's been times when we, we've been short and can't fill these type of professional-level positions, and they're required, especially now. So, I, we're lucky to, uh, that this doctor is willing to sign this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Batella. Supervisor Gillio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So... Health and Safety Code 101 000, title is Appointment of Health Officer. This is a California State Health and Safety Code, not a county of San Benito Code, not a city of Hollister Code, not a county of Santa Clara Code, this is overarching state order. Each Board of Supervisor shall, not should, not may, not could, not would, appoint a health officer as county health officer. I'm gonna read some of the, um, these are, this is off of the job announcement that we've had active for at least 18 months or two years, um, and we haven't been able to fill it. We've had two interim, to be clear, I was a little confused with some of the statements earlier, um, we've had two interim health, uh, officers since I've been on the board the last, uh, 18 months. We haven't had a full-time, um, uh, doctor, because we haven't been able to recruit and retain one, most likely because if you look at, um, if you look at the, uh, the, um, the salary range, and you look at the, the, the packages and all that stuff, and compare it to surrounding counties, just like unfortunately, every other position in our county, it's very difficult for us to do that because of our, our revenues and our resources and, and the, the ability to, um, to, to retain and recruit these folks. Um, here's, here's a couple of the, uh, items, and I'm gonna try to skip over the, the, the COVID-type, public health-type, type items that you may not be aware of, the things that we absolutely have to have a public health officer for, and this is the reason why I support continuing with this public health officer. By the way, I think he's doing a great job. He, he is pushing us forward as, as quickly as the state will allow us to push forward, he is pushing us forward. He has not slowed us down one minute. The only thing that slowed us down was about three or four weeks ago, when we had a transition between health officers. We were very lucky to get him onboard, almost, what was it, within a day or two, Ray? You, you were able to get him the, the next day, so we were, we're very fortunate just to have this interim person, because we're required to by law, not because we, we want to or don't want to have one. So, uh, directs, uh, public health education, promotes advancement of maternal and child health, directs recording of vital statistics, directs immunization programs, supervises, directs and assigns staff, assigning work, employees, counseling. Um, I'm looking for the, uh, death certificates. It, they, we actually need a public health officer to issue, uh, live birth and death certificates. Here it is here. Directs the issuance and recordation of birth and death certificates, and provides vital statistics to the State Department of Public Health. My point is, without reading this whole list, is, is, uh, that obviously, uh, COVID is, is a huge, uh, responsibility and, and drain on, uh, uh, time, but there is a huge, huge list of items that we absolutely have to have a public health officer for, and I support continuing with this, uh, health officer and this contract, and, um, I, I'm very, very hopeful, I'm glad to hear we've already tested one person or had an interview with one person, and perhaps we can finally get a full-time public health officer and, uh, move forward and have that person here more often. Dr. Marty was available more, um, just because of his, uh, current situation, and Dr. G is, is not as male as much frankly as I would like him to be, but we, we have what we have because of the situation that we find ourselves in. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ray?
I also wanted, I wanted to add one more comment to Supervisor Medina's, um, questions. One of the things is, um, to, for clarity is, is that this is from subvention funds as well, so it's not general fund money, um, so even if there is a little overlap, or we continue to have him for other types of things like OES or other things, it's just separate funds, basically. I just wanna make sure that the board was aware of that.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna, Supervisor Hernandez, or do you have more questions, comments?
Um, no, I, well, my only comment is, I would like to make a friendly amendment to this, um, to encourage definitely more transparency and consistency, and, and to honor the spirit of the letter that we wrote to the governor.
Okay, can you hold off on those recommendations till we hear public comments?
Sure.
And then, I'll, I'll ask you, um, for your input on that. Is that okay?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, open up to the public, do you have any, any speakers on just this subject matter?
Robert, if you could please state your name?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I do have to say, I, I feel like I'm becoming the ghost of Marty Richmond, and I'm, I'm, I really try not to, but, um, uh, again, I wanna, uh, express my deepest respect for all five of the Board of Supervisors. I know you all, and, um, I know how hard you work and how difficult, uh, some of these issues are, and, and I really do wish you the best of luck. But, um, what I, uh, wanted to, uh, uh, just remind you, you, you know, it's one thing to be a public health officer, and, you know, uh, get in that capacity, and especially if you're a medical doctor, you know, you're a proverbial hammer where everything is a nail, and you're very narrowly focused, um, sometimes, so there's always that danger of happening. But I wanted just to relate to you, um, a quote from today's Wall Street Journal where, uh, it's, it's about this very, uh, issue, uh, or, you know, how do you determine whether to open up or not, what restrictions you put in? And this is a quote from Pakistan's Prime Minister Imran Khan, where he said, "We sought a total lockdown without thinking about the consequences for the daily wage earners, the street vendors, the laborers, all of who face poverty and hunger. May Allah forgive us." And that's the difficulty I've had, um, you know, with the actions the county has taken, and, you know, with, with this particular doctor, I'm sure he's a nice fellow, and I go into the emergency room, I hope he's not listening right now, but you gotta look at, you, you need somebody in that position that is gonna look at the various trade-offs and be able to make a mature decision. It's so easy to say, yes, I'm a medical doctor, you must shut down everything right now. But I do believe that the county and he has consistently forgotten about the daily wage earners, the street vendors, the laborers, meaning the people that own businesses around here and the people that work for them. There is a balance, and the irony of, of comments that we hear, that it's okay to have a thousand or two thousand people protesting, you know, downtown Hollister, and, you know, people, yeah, I had my camera, and not everybody was wearing a mask, but then, you know, people wanna chastise, you know, a group for getting together to open up SBC. So, you know, again, please take that into consideration, and whether this doctor has that broad, uh, look and what the trade-offs are of his decisions, or he's just looking at that nail and hammer. I'm a medical professor, professional, and we should all shelter in place, or, you know, whatever. So, again, thank you, and, um, again, that's the end of my comments.
Thank you. Next speaker, Card.
Bee, if you could please state your name?
Hi, this is Bee Gonzalez, Supervisor-elect. Um, I just wanna make the comment that, remember what happened with Dr. Marty, when we had one board member throw a tantrum, and the rest of the board members stood silent and allowed a good doctor to walk away? We cannot afford that with Dr. G. We have someone who's in contract right now, who's doing what I would consider an adequate job. I don't, I don't agree with all of his comments that I just heard this morning, but I've been attending these board meetings on a weekly basis since March, and I've been listening, I've been taking notes, and you five were elected to the position that you're sitting at the dais right now, to speak to your constituents and to listen to them. Right now, the community needs a public health officer. We cannot survive as a county without it, and you have to weigh the common sense of the demands, the need and requirements of the law, and then open our community. Now, I've been attending parts of the ad hoc committees to open up on the businesses here, and I'm not totally sure we're going at a pace that's, that's, that's to the benefit of the community, but I totally understand that we need to open up these businesses so that the, the, the businesses can survive and evolve. But that doesn't mean the virus is gone. That doesn't mean that it's safe for the community to go out. The masks need to continue to be worn, and when you look at this contract, whether you renew it or not, um, think about the good Dr. G is providing and the legal requirement that he is checking that, that, that cost off that we have accounting. Um, but just search your heart and vote what's best in the interest of the community. Thank you.
Next speaker, Card.
Courtney, if you could please state your name?
Hello, my name is Courtney Evans. I'm first curious, um, that, I'm not quite sure I heard anything in regards to the first, um, public comments have this item removed. Um, I think I missed that, or maybe that wasn't discussed. Um, I agree with Supervisor Hernandez that we should not have, um, items in the contract that create blurred lines to the public. Um, I have raised my concerns in regards to the recruiting process of our health department for a long time. I also tried to get the contact information from the last public health officer. Um, many people in the community have tried to get contact information of our current public health officer. In Santa Cruz County, there is a large group, now, to correct you, Mr. Batella, we're not just a couple people. There's also a very large group in Santa Cruz that is like-minded with our group, Open SBC here in San Benito County, who's also fighting the same issue in Santa Cruz County. Um, we should not be accepting anything that blurs the lines of the people. And if there is any question about that, I agree with the first, um, person that made the comments, Adriana, about removing this from the agenda. In no way, shape, or form are we saying that we shouldn't have a public health officer, but, um, our recruitment process should be better, and once again, we should never have things in, in contracts with, um, people that blur the lines of the people's voice. Thank you.
Next speaker, Card.
Hello, this is Dave Patrick. Um, so, I'll state it again, the doctor's following an illegal order. Uh, he isn't following the state invoking the mask order, the mask order is his order, not the state's order. Peter is correct, you are null and void by giving full rein to this doctor to invoke any order upon us, and the only recourse is to fire him, which you will not do anyway. You're allowing exactly what Peter is saying, allowing this doctor unchallenged power over us. And her comments need to be addressed about Salinas, that was untrue, and it's on the Monterey County site. Now, I called the local health department to speak to the doctor last week. I was told that he doesn't have an email, phone, and couldn't tell me when he's gonna be in that office. Uh, he's inaccessible to us, but yet he is an unchallenged, uh, authority in this county, making rules over every single person in this county, and he's not even accessible to us, except for these meetings, which he only shows up maybe a couple, a month or a couple, every couple months. Uh, so, and his threat to going back to square one, uh, as he stated in Benito link, and in last week's meeting, is just further evidence that we cannot, uh, soak this much power into one unelected official that you don't even have the power to rein in, if you feel that he's going outside the lines, uh, expect for to fire him, which you're not gonna do anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Card.
Heather, if you could please state your name?
Hi, my name is Heather Hickerson, and I'm a 27-year resident of San Benito County. I am in support of the Board of Supervisors extending the contract of Dr. G. You've already run one public health officer away in the middle of a pandemic, and to do so to another would be irresponsible. We need to have medical professionals making these recommendations and guiding our decisions during this pandemic at the state and local level, especially as we open up our county to more potential exposure. None of you are doctors, neither are the same four vocal Open SBC voices. I ask you to please vote to extend the contract of Dr. G. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Card.
We have no more public comment. If you wish to make a comment, press star nine or raise your hand.
Mr. Chair, could I make one correction while we're waiting?
Yes.
I just wanted to note that under Section A, um, this person does serve in the absence of a public health officer, so once we appoint a new public health officer, that person would have the authority to act as the public health officer. This contract only acts in the absence or, uh, sickness or unavailability of the public health officer. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Good, thank you, Barbara. Okay, back, do we have any speaker cards?
Um, Medina already spoke.
Yeah, she already spoke, I saw that, she, yeah. I think Jackie Morris?
Elia, if you could please state your name?
She already spoke to...
No, not to this one, not to this one.
Elia Salinas, thank you.
Yes, madam. Yes, madam, go ahead.
Hello.
Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
May I speak?
Yes.
Okay. It's Elia Salinas. Um, I, I want to, I want to encourage, and I believe that we have enough, uh, votes to continue the contract for the doctor, for the public health officer. And I think that what Supervisor Hernandez is trying to say with contract, about contradiction, is the fact that if this public health officer doesn't agree with him, that's where you have the contradiction. So, uh, maybe he wants to continue to go, and, and I know for a fact that we have gone through so many years without a, a public health, a full-time public health officer because you as supervisors know that it is very hard to recruit high-quality individuals to come and work in San Benito County because we do not have the funds to pay a great, a rate that will bring them here on a full-time basis. We are, we are competing with other counties because of the pay rate. And we are very lucky to have had Dr. Marty. Unfortunately, he's gone. In the meantime, between Dr. Marty and Dr. G now, um, we got a variance. And we got a variance on, if I remember correctly, on a Wednesday. And the numbers went up on Thursday and Friday after having received the variance. If those numbers had come in before the approval of the variance, we would not have the variance. And we're fortunate that the numbers were down. The numbers are increasing. The Constitution of the State of California gives the public health officer the authority to make decisions based on the public health. We have voices out there that are not going to change their minds, and you as the Board of Supervisors have done the correct decision on having to have had to hire Dr. G because you know that you cannot have a public health department without a public health officer. Getting rid of the public health officer gets rid of the entire public health department. And thank you, Supervisor Gilio, for stating the Health and Safety Rules Code as to what and why we have a public health officer. I think that we need to continue, and I know that you're gonna continue with it. Again, science over facts, uh, science and facts and data over emotions. And what's going on here is decisions are, are being made, or voices are being, are heard because there's so much of an emotion out there. And this is for the public health, the decisions are made for the public health. A minority may not like it, but there is a majority, there is a, a silent majority that backs you up for the supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Courtney.
Can I get some clarity, Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry, not right now. You wait till the next speaker, and then I'll definitely get a clarity.
Uh, we have no more public comment. We have Jackie Morris, but I'm having difficulties with her getting to speak.
Maybe suggest she calls in with a phone, perhaps, or?
We promoted her to panel this, and she, it seemed like we lost her mic, but she did raise her hand during the item. Um, and it's not allowed.
Oh, there she goes again. Is that her? No, someone else?
Jackie, is that you?
Yes, good morning. This is Jackie Morris, San Juan Batista resident, lifelong San Benito County resident. Um, I would like to thank the Board, uh, the majority of the Board for acknowledging and understanding the science and the data behind this pandemic. I understand, I hear other voices of, of county residents, my, um, co-residents in the struggles that they're having, whether it be with opening up a small business, um, allowing their children to congregate at school. But I think foremost, we need to remember, we're still in the middle of this pandemic. We're fortunate enough that we live in a rural community where density of population is not an issue. But we also have to remember that we are a bedroom community, and most of our, um, workers that do live in our county, myself included, have to commute out to our livelihood, to gain our livelihoods. The people that live in the county and own a small business in the county and wanna open up, they may not be fully understanding the ramifications of us leaving our county into more denser populated cities and towns. I wholly recommend, um, that you retain the contract with Dr. G, our current public health officer. He stepped in in a heartbeat when you would've left our county wide open for many issues and possible, possibly litigation. Um, I agree with Ms. Salinas and the other speakers that were voicing their concerns and, uh, comments to retain, uh, Dr. G's, um, contract at this time. Um, myself, as being a healthcare professional, I find it very difficult to compete with the salary that I can get out of the county versus staying in the county. So, I think you're very fortunate to have someone that's trained as he is, also in emergency medicine, to take up the reins once Dr. Marty was run out of town. And that was so shameful, I just wanna say. It was unethical, it was unprofessional, it was an embarrassment. Um, and I hope that, that we never have to see that sort of, um, fiasco, you know, at a Board of Supervisors meeting. There's just no call for it. Um, once again, to all the small business owners, I hear you. I'm sorry for your hardships, but when there is a pandemic, the amendment or the constitution addresses that. This is a very unusual time in our history, and it is a pandemic. Maybe you don't see it here in our county, but believe me, the numbers are kicking up. And the foremost way to prevent giving or contracting this virus is by face covering. Maybe mask is too harsh of a word. I call it face covering. I wear, I wear mine to protect you. You wear yours to protect me and others. And for those that are, um, clamoring to get their kids back in school, fortunately, my children are young adults. There's also a syndrome that they have seen in young children, and children of all ages, actually, I want to correct that, that resembles Kawasaki disease, which is a very serious condition. So, I...
All right. Thank you very much.
We have no more public comment.
Okay, I'll close public comment. Supervisor Hernandez.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, yeah, so I, as I stated earlier, I'd like to see if we could do a friendly amendment to change the, the expectation of the contract.
Supervisor, you mentioned something about a clarification.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me. Yeah, uh, so, one of the commenters, the, 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 the public speakers mentioned that the pu, the health department cannot exist without a public health officer. So, I guess if, have we ever had a time when we haven't had a public health officer? And did we just shut down public health? Is, is that?
Um, there's some statutory duties that we have to have the public health officer for. Um, if we did not have a public health officer, it would not cease to exist. Um, but we would not have the public health officer be able to perform those duties, which are duties that have to be performed.
Yeah, no, no, so, to be clear, the comment that was made, and they said it was fact, that the public health officer is pretty much required for us to even have a public health department.
I, I believe that we could lose some funding if we didn't have the public health officer, though.
So, I'm trying to, for clarification, do we stop functioning the public health department without a public health officer?
The only thing, the only, the response I can give to that is if, if there was somebody that died or some, we have to deal with a death certificate. So, yes, we have to have a, a doctor on staff to address that, uh, birth and other things. So, so the answer to that would be, um, that yes, we need, we need to have a health officer. Now, in this case, it's an, it's an interim, it's, it's a, it's in a contract format, not in a, in an actual hiring county, which we're trying to...
Well, no, no, no. So, let me put it in context.
Okay.
I'm not disagreeing, we don't need a public health officer. I know they serve certain duties and functions. Completely understand that. But the statement that was made kind of made the, 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 implied basically that without the public health officer, we don't have a public health department. The, the Health and Human Services, which is what I understand to be the public health department. They do a lot of other things outside of what the duties of, of the public health officer, but to assume that that requires us, without him or her, whoever that person is, we don't have a public health department?
No, so, we, we've actually had that happen, I would say, in a snapshot of time. Dr. Marty resigned. We did not have a health officer for a period of time. The public health department was still existed.
Exactly.
Okay. We eventually hired Dr. G, was within hours, maybe. Um, and then we had a doctor on staff, so.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Can I make a motion?
Actually, I'm sorry, Supervisor Medina, uh, Supervisor, uh, Hernandez is gonna, is about to make an amendment.
Yeah.
I will allow him.
I just want him, you know, friendly amendment, um, that, yeah, that we, two things that be amended in the contract, and one is that it, that it, uh, it never suspends our authority as, as basically supervisors to, uh, in, basically, uh, to support our duty of, of, as a legislative body, right? So, then we have a way into his decision-making process, not so much with public health, but having to do with the impacts of a shelter in place as it relates to the economy, as it relates to constitutional rights, right? So, protecting our oath of office is what I'm saying. And then the, the, the second element is, uh, is the reporting, that we require basically him to have a more consistent opportunity for reporting so that we have a better expectation.
Okay, Supervisor Hernandez, not to be, not to be rude, but, uh, can you clarify your two mo, your two positions? Because...
I know they're long.
I'm, I'm about to go to Supervisor Medina and ask her for a motion, so, um, giving you an opportunity. Can you restate your two positions?
So, number one, we still have the authority to weigh into his decision-making. And number two is, we have reporting from him.
Okay.
That it requires basically both to have.
Okay, my recommendation to you is, um, pull back from your, from your, from your position, pushing a position. Let Supervisor Medina make a motion, and then you can ask for amendment to his motion. And then you can add those two points to his motion. That would be my recommendation. It would be a lot smoother.
So, as, as assuming as my motion stays on the table, fine.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve?
Was, was that an emotion, or are you gonna pull back your position?
I'll, I'll pull back the motion with the ability to amend.
You got it. Supervisor Medina.
I'd like to make a motion, approve the contract amendment one with, uh, Dr. David G., M.D., F.A.C.E.P., extend the term date to December 31st, 2020 for a total sum not to exceed $72,000.
Uh, second.
Okay. Discussion, or?
My, my amendment, so my friendly amendment basically requires those two items.
Okay, that, that you...
I accept.
Actually, and those two items is that we, that we never lose our ability to be board supervisors?
No.
No, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, okay. So, uh, that we have legislative authority over his, his application of the shelter in place. And we, uh...
Well, well, interruption, sorry, since I made the motion.
Yes.
Is, is that legal?
He could, he could say that, but he can say whatever he wants to say. And then we, then you say if it's legal, then well, I, I'll ask Barbara, can he do that? That's why. Go ahead, go ahead, Supervisor Hernandez.
So, that we have legislative authority over his shelter in place as it impacts to everything outside of public health, that we have that authority to basically nullify or to at least amend his order so we make sure that it, it, it supports our authority as supervisors, right? So, I'm not saying we, we should tell him what to do with public health, but there is a stopgap to say, if this impacts the economy, then we have, uh, an ability to encourage a different, a different, uh, rollout. Or, or we, we have the legislative ability to change that.
And then your second part is the reporting.
And then the second part is the reporting, yes.
I will support you.
Yeah, we need more consistency with reporting. We need an expectation to make sure that he's, he's not just showing up at a whim or when he wants to, that we have an expecta, a scheduled application of, of his reporting. And, uh, evidence, before he mentions studies, right, because it's such a hot topic, that, uh, that he references those things and that we agendize it,
Disclosure.
You know, prior to a meeting, 48 hours or whatever the, the reporting requirement is.
Mr. Chair, a discussion, please?
Actually, hold on a minute.
Well, I still have...
Put me in line.
But I, but, but hold on a second. I still have...
You do, and I will give you the freedom, I'll give you, you're still, you're next, and then after you...
Because I, well, I'm not gonna, I, I don't want, I don't wanna...
I know what you're going, so, before I ask Supervisor Medina if he accepts that as an amendment, uh, Barbara, is that legal on the first part of Supervisor Hernandez?
I, I think that it would not... I think it's overly broad as currently written. Um, and I would propose that, um, perhaps, instead of trying to amend the contract right now, that, that perhaps, uh, if, if, uh, the Board would consider it, uh, you could delegate to Health and Human Services to come up with some sort of reporting, uh, protocol or guidelines. And, uh, but the, as to the first part, um, that would be very tricky. Um, uh, and that there is a, I think that we should deal with it on a case-by-case basis. Um, if there was ever a situation that we thought that the public health order was, you know, infringed on the authority of the Board, I wouldn't address it in the contract.
I will, I will accept his friendly amendment just with the reporting side. Better reporting from the doctor, whether it comes from the Health Human Services Department or the doctor himself.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I'm sorry, if, is that gonna be actually changed into the contract so that we would address it as an amendment that could be signed by the CAO to address reporting? Or is it just a directive to staff to come up with a reporting protocol?
It's a directive to staff.
Okay.
Okay. So, your, um, your friendly amendments failed. They're not accepted.
Can we, can I ask for a roll call vote?
Sure.
I haven't even...
Actually, hold on a minute. We're still a lot of individuals to discuss Supervisor Hernandez. Roll call is not possible at this moment. Supervisor, I'll give you an opportunity to discuss, but I got supervisors who wanna speak to. Supervisor Medina, I mean, sorry, Supervisor Gilio?
Yeah, so, the, the, procedurally, this is not going well. But here's what I suggest to clean this up, uh, to make it, um, so, everybody kinda has a, an opinion on what's going on, and, and, uh, Supervisor Hernandez's issues can be handled. So, we have a contract in front of us that is an interim, for an interim health officer that's been spelled out, vetted by legal, and I don't think we should be rewriting a contract up here. Again, I'm not a doctor. I'm not a lawyer. Uh, I'm not a lot of things, two of those, right? So, I'm not those. So, if, if you want that, let's agendize Supervisor Hernandez's concerns and then have, have an amendment to the contract. That legal can have time to vet, bring it back to the Board, and say, "Hey, Board, roll call vote. Do you like these things that Supervisor Hernandez changed? We can all vote on it and move forward." But to have, uh, this vagueness in this, this, uh, discussion up here and then say, "Well, make it into a contract." What if it doesn't capture exactly what he wanted? I'm still a little confused because I heard it differently two times. So, my suggestion, you have a motion, you have a second. Supervisor Hernandez asked for a friendly amendment. Supervisor Medina said
Accepted.
To, to one, to a, a reporting requirement to direct, uh, staff to have, uh, the doctor report things to the Board before he's gonna do it at the meeting. That's the way I understood it.
Directive, not a...
A directive, not in the contract. And then if Peter, Supervisor Hernandez, wants changes in the contract, work with the legal team, bring, bring it back, and, you know, let's, let's address that later. But I don't think we should be writing a contract up here at the dais because there's, um, already what I've heard, I've, I'm not, I'm not even clear what the contract would say and what we'd be voting on right now. Contracts are very specific. The ands, the is, the was, the shalls, those are very important. And, and we need to make sure that that's right. And then we can bring that back and vote on it at the next meeting if that's his desire.
You're, you're 100% accurate, with the exception that what we're doing today, if the motion passes, there's no changes to the current contract as presented by staff. The only addition that we're doing is directing staff to make sure that there's a reporting and disclosure to the Board in future meetings.
Well, that's what the motion and the second is, but that's not what Supervisor Hernandez was saying. Thank you. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor, thank you Supervisor Gil, Gilio. Supervisor Batello, and then I'll go, then I'll go to Hernandez, and then I'll go to Medina.
Yeah, um, first off, I, I seconded the motion specifically so I would not accept any, uh, friendly amendments, uh, to this contract. You know, I think we've had two doctors...
Will you accept the directive from, just to have better reporting?
Pardon me?
I mean, this is not in the contract, but you, do you support having better reporting from HHS?
I think the reporting has been fine.
Okay.
I think we, we've had access to the doctor. He's called, talked to us individually. Uh, we all know that. And we're fiddling around with a, a straightforward, easy contract. It's time to just do it and move on to the next item.
Disagree.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Batello. Supervisor Hernandez?
Yeah, completely disagree. So, what, what I'm hearing from Supervisor Batello, um, is it's okay for the doctor to reference medical data, and we're just supposed to trust that data, not even clarifying where it came from, what the study is, what the information is, no dissemination of information to the public. So, he's agreeing with violating basically that transparency element of what we're asking for, which is obviously why Supervisor Medina supported. He's just asking for transparency. It sounds to me, I see it's more, it's a, a, an emotional response rather than an objective response. Because if it was objective, then it'd be spec, specifically focused on the comments that were made by Supervisor Medina outside of emotion. That's not what I heard. That's not what I heard. So, if I don't get, basically, if that's fine, if no one wants to support it, I will not support this contract as is.
So, once again, the motion on the floor is approve contract amendment number one, extending the term date to December 31st, 2020 for a total sum not to exceed seventy-two thousand dollars. No friendly amendments.
No friend, okay, thank you, so you pull back the exceptions of that, and you accept it, right?
And I accept that.
Okay, if there's any further discussion, I'd like, I'd like to make a vote on this and I, there's been a request to do roll call. Okay, we'll do roll call, roll call on that motion?
Hernandez?
No.
Medina?
Yes.
Delaprine?
Yes.
Patel?
Yes.
Gilio?
Yes.
Motion carries for one.
Mr. Chair, may I request that, uh, we take a restroom break, um, just for a few moments, or I don't know what your plan is for the schedule?
My plan, actually, I wanted to take a restroom break too, but my plan was to finish number thirty and then most likely go to lunch because we're gonna have some good healthy discussion.
Seventeen.
Huh?
We have seventeen as well, Mr. Chair.
Seventeen, okay, let's take a quick five-minute break, quick five-minute break. We're all here. You ready, Ray? Okay, let's go. Okay, now we'll move to item number seventeenth.
Oh, yes, maybe we'll go on a lighter note, something that's not COVID-related. Anyway, I'm really excited about, um, the Stradivert A, uh, project. It's a fantastic, um, opportunity for Samuel County. It's, uh, it's gonna provide a lot of jobs, a lot of business opportunities, uh, not only in that area, but, uh, probably throughout, in, uh, Hollister as well. And these applicants are going to put their project in their zone, uh, I guess their zoning, uh, change, uh, on, uh, an initiative, which a lot of people in this community thinks it's, it's, uh, the right way to do, uh, land use planning. Um, this project happens to be very, very large and impactful, and I, I think it's, um, certainly, uh, warrants initiative process. And one of the requirements is that, you know, they do a financial analysis of the implications of, of, of the project, uh, on the county, just so the voters have an idea what they could expect. And, um, the, we have a contract here that we're going to, um, approve for the plant, Planning Department or Research, uh, uh, Resource Management Agency to do that work, there's not very much time, I'm very concerned about that. Uh, we have worked with, uh, EMC Planning Group in the past and, uh, uh, time is, is sometimes lost with that consultants. And, uh, and this is really, really important to get out so that the voters have an opportunity to, you know, to weigh, uh, weigh the, the project correctly and its impacts here. So, what I, uh, what I would like to suggest, um, is approving this contract that EMC might act more as a, a peer review, um, uh, consultant as, um, the Str- Stradivert A, uh, group has done a lot of financial analysis, uh, for this project and, and do some of this consulting, uh, review on peer review of some of the prior work that's been done. And, uh, that's kinda what I'm concerned about, getting it out and completed, uh, in this short a time is gonna be a monumental task. So, I, I wanted to encourage, um, RMA to do what they can.
Thank you Supervisor Patel, comments, questions from the board?
Okay.
Right, is there, do you have anybody from the public?
Mr. Chair, this is Karen, I'm a member of this.
Oh, hi.
From the RMA.
Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Morning, good afternoon.
Chair, I'm a member of the board. I appreciate the comments from RMA, uh, I stress the consultancy, importance of timeless, we have very little time to do this, we have six weeks. This has to be an independent study, that's the rule. And it's more than a financial study, it's a full impact study, uh, and it's for the benefit of the voters to have an independent analysis. Uh, to the extent, certainly the consultant, uh, yeah, uh, they can look at any work that, uh, has been done by others, it could be very helpful. But again, at the end of the day, the voters have to be assured that this is a totally independent study. That's all I ask for your approval, thank you.
Thank you. Any other departments, staff? Okay, I'll take, uh, open it up to the public, anyone from the public?
If you wish to make a comment, press star nine or raise your hand. We have no public comment.
No pub, okay, I'll bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I, uh, make a motion to approve, um, the, uh, item number seventeen as stated by staff.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, vote ne, against, no, I just wanna be consistent with the other project that I voted no to. So, it's a four to one, passes four to one. Okay, now we'll move to public hearing number thirty.
Number thirty?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, where is it thirty? Twenty-six.
There is thirty, public hearing.
There is thirty, huh? Is Tom here or he's on Zoom?
But that's, that's just Harry. This one is.
Yes, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
This is item twenty-six, this is a public hearing.
Yes.
For the, uh, potential reading groups.
Yes.
Uh, Kathleen Gallagher, who our staff is available to make a full presentation on this, uh, to you, and there is a representative from ecology. Uh, last night, uh, this item was also considered, uh, by the City of Hollister, uh, City Council, because this is a regional agency, it also has, also has a lot of the piece, uh, City Council did not vote to move this ahead last night, uh, pending the action of the supervisors. Okay, so I will ask Kathleen now to, uh, come in and, uh, present her report, thank you.
Actually, ho, hold on a minute, you said that the City Council did not approve it pending board action?
The, uh, and again, perhaps Kathleen to, uh, stand on this as she was at the meeting last night, they did not take action on this and they wanted to hear what the board was gonna do first, from my understanding.
Okay, Supervisor Medina?
I can also explain that to you after Mrs. Gallagher, why they did not take action.
Okay, all right, go ahead, Kathleen, Kathleen.
This is Kathleen Gallagher, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent, thank you, um, Harry is exactly right, uh, as the, as the defendant at Hollister, uh, we're, City Council meeting last night and they voted, uh, four zero to not, to reconsider the item until next week, uh, pending that we're supervisor, uh, this incident today. So, that's clarification. I know it's been a long meeting, so I can, um, is it agreeable to the chair and the board proceed?
Yes.
Great, so the item before you today is consideration of adoption of Resolution 2020, uh, thirty-eight, which is approving the rate selection rate for ecology effective July first, 2020 to June thirtieth of 2021. As we went to call on the April twenty-first board meeting, the board adopted a resolution of a Proposition 218 notice of the proposed rate increases that are effective July first and to hold a public meeting today. This date is required at least forty-five days prior, excuse me, forty-five days to the notices received by the affected rate payer. So, the Proposition 218 notice was mailed to rate payers and property owners on April twenty-ninth by ecology. The proposition includes mailers included in your agenda package for this item. A property, so four thousand nine hundred and four notices were mailed to county unincorporated rate payers.
What was that number, what, what was that number, I'm sorry?
Certainly, four thousand nine hundred and four.
Thank you.
Very quickly, in your, in your staff report, there's a, there's an overview of the entire process, the competitive procurement that be completed, uh, and the rate, uh, methodology that's included in the franchise agreement that allocates, uh, a rate increase to ecology annually. Very quickly, the Proposition 218 notice, um, process is intended to provide rate payers the advanced notice and an opportunity to file a formal protest regarding the potential new solid waste rate. Um, if you might know, a court does not yet rule that Proposition 218 applies to solid waste collection rate. Uh, we were directed in a bunch of calls into the county to follow the majority protest proceedings that are set forth in Proposition 218. Um, so the statements of protests are accepted through the public hearing dates, uh, June, as of today, June fifteenth. At the end of the public hearing, it's a, the county clerk, locality, and the court disqualifying written protest. One point of note, uh, any protest will be noted as the direction that I receive from county council. So, rate payer or simply tenant can, can write, uh, a, a notice of protest. So, the Board of Supervisors would then certify the written protest in the opposition due to the new solid. to the new solid waste collection rate, to see if it meets or does not meet the 50% protest threshold. As you might recall, a majority protest is 50% of one, and if that majority protest exists against the proposed fee, then the Board would not approve the rate increase. If the majority protest is not received, then the Board would consider approval of the solid waste collection rate. Phil Coucher, who is General Manager of Recology, is also on the line, and he and I are both happy to answer any questions the Board has. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Medina?
Okay, last night at the City Council meeting, there was a lot of confusion. One of the confusing facts were, I did call Phil Coucher, and we did have a talk, there was no negotiations, there was no backroom deals. What I was asking, the General Manager for Recology, was looking at the amount of residents that received the letter. There was 4,904. So in order to have majority, you need 2,453. We know we're not even close to that number. Out of the 4,904 paying residential people, they average $30 a month for service. That takes that total up to about 147,000 a month. Over 12 months, we're talking about $1.7 million, or roughly 1.8. And the increase is a 4.5%. So that increase is roughly $80,000 we're speaking of. That's what our county residents, they're paying an additional $80,000 spread over 4,904 residents. So what I asked the General Manager of Recology was, from, this is, this payment is really in the rear, meaning these dollars were for July 1st of 2019 to June 30th of 2020. So our next increase, next year at this time, would be from July 1st of 2020 to June 30th of 2021. So my concern was, with COVID-19 and everything that's happening in our economy and in the world, is to possibly, a lot of companies are doing forbearance, they're also doing some type of help to the county, or to the city, to their residents, and to their customers. So what is the possibility of deferring this, or tabling this for approximately six months? Come back, and then look at where the economy is at, and see if we can do something differently. So that's what we were talking about. I just wanted to bring that to light, because there was some confusion last night. And I'd like to ask Phil if everything we spoke about was correct.
Phil?
Yeah, I hear you, Mr. Medina. Yeah, you asked me about what the effect was going to be. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, yeah, what the effect's going to be of delaying, and, you know, the overall effect, you know, on a monthly basis, it's about, it's about $14,000 a month is what the rate increase would represent. So, you know, we provided the rate application as it stated in the contract, and it's a similar process that we've used since 2008. Just would like to mention that, you know, we are aware of the difficulties that are being brought on by the COVID. You know, as a result, we have allowed businesses to suspend their services, those who are no longer doing business. And then we have also, we have not stopped any residential services due to non-payment. So, you know, we're cognizant of the fact that there's difficult patterns, and are not taking any, you know, financial burden to those that are not able to pay at this moment.
Okay, that's what I wanted to bring up, that conversation. Is there any way you'd be able to go back to your, the owners of Recology, which is company-owned, and asking for some type of a deferral for six months?
You know, that's actually a system made by, you know, the Board. If they chose not to pass this, then, you know, we would reconvene with staff. We haven't contemplated, you know, what would happen at that point, but it would require us to meet with staff and find out what the best resolution to be would be.
Thank you, sir.
Sure, hold on, Supervisor Gillio. I got a couple Supervisor ahead of you. I said, thank you Supervisor Medina, good thinking, good idea, thank you. Supervisor Madina?
Yeah, I'm happy Supervisor Medina had those conversations. I'm very concerned about the impacts to individuals who've been laid off from their jobs, and just getting back to work, probably a lot of them in a limited basis, as well as the impacts on business, and this coming with a rate increase, Phil, is a pretty hard pill to swallow. I think it's not the worst idea to defer for six months, as people kind of get back on their feet and get going. And here's a question I have for you, and possibly our staff, maybe some others out there in our attendance, is, could, if by not taking this increase right now, could you relate some of this as a loss due to COVID-19, and have some recovery through some of the federal and state programs that we have out there? I think it would qualify, and maybe be worth exploring at least, to make sure that, you know, because obviously, I'm sure your business has been affected by COVID-19 as well, Phil. That's kind of my question. Sounds like a yes.
I like that one. Supervisor Gillio?
Yeah, for Mr. Coucher, we couldn't hear your last statement, maybe you can repeat it here in a second. But I also wanted to echo Supervisor Medina's concerns, and also thank community members, especially Elia Salinas for bringing this up. You meant to comment here.
Yeah, my title was, that would be something, it would be.
Holy cow, he's a little delayed there. Made, he made, made this apparent to us, so thank you for bringing that up and getting it out to the community. This is something that we've dealt with nearly every year, and what my question is, is more for legal counsel. So this is a contractual obligation, so a couple of years ago, the city, the county, San Juan Batista, entered into a contract with the waste disposal companies, and Recology, we went out for RFP, Recology won the RFP, and in the contract, it allows them to go out for, it's kind of a complicated formula to figure out the, it's not just a CPI, you also have the D-Sol Fuel Index and all these different things in there. And there was a year, I think right before this, that they actually didn't go out for it. So I think that there's precedence for not doing it, Phil, and my hope is that, just as being a good partner within the community, is that if, and Barbara, I'd like you to answer the legality of maybe us not approving a 218, and does it just go through automatically? Is it one of those things that just happens anyway, regardless of what we say up here, because of the law and the contract? But if that's the case, is there a way that you could do a credit, you know, a monthly credit for a few months, or something to just help out all the customers to figure that out? I think in these times, approving any type of increase, you know, that, for that type of service, that's mandated to have, without few exceptions, is difficult. And I just want to get your thoughts on the 218, Barbara, and then Phil, on maybe coming back to us later with what the company would like to see done.
And I'm going to answer it to start with, and I'm going to have Kathleen answer the technical question, because I don't have a copy of the contract with us. But basically, the Board is accepting the maximum allowable rate, so I would think that the best thing to do would be for the Board to approve the maximum allowable rate, and then have Recology set it at a lower rate, or defer it for a period of time, so that they don't actually have to impose the rate. I know that there's contractual provisions in the contract, Kathleen. What is the consequence to our budget and our, you know, what would we have to owe the contractor unless they voluntarily waive the contractual provision? Because basically, you're asking them to waive the contractual provision in the event that the Board doesn't approve the rate increase. What is that financial cost of that? Would that be $14,000 per month approximately to the county, or could you clarify?
So the, thanks for the question, Barbara. The revenue shortfall would fall on Recology. Because we are in uncharted waters, we haven't, we haven't commented this before, some potential options might be Recology has to reduce services to meet the revenue shortfall. That's one of the things that after the meeting with Hollister City Council last night, Phil and I spoke briefly, but he has basically stated he needs to go back to his corporate folks and attorneys to see what the options could be. But we are in uncharted waters in this scenario, Barbara.
Would you recommend that we continue it to the 29th, and get an agreement with Recology about how it would be dealt with if we didn't go forward with the Prop 218?
I think that's, I think a good option to pursue.
That answers your question, Supervisor Gillio.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Hernandez?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is kind of, to me, kind of, one of those things that really stands out, how, you know, the intentions are all probably well-assumed, but the impacts are just the opposite. You know, coming at it from what actually Supervisor Medina and Gillio had mentioned, which I totally agree, I'd rather defer this, because we're literally asking in the time of crisis, you know, even with our economy, for them, for our consumers to pay more, and assuming we understand the impacts of the unemployment rate, we're also dealing with the impacts of basically a contradictory law. I've mentioned this before. From the beginning, there was an expectation, right, with trying to eliminate methane gas in the landfill and all that, for folks to basically minimize use of plastics and all, right? So there's these rules, and there was that cost associated with it, which, you know, as always, it's the public that bears the burden. Now, all of a sudden, with COVID rules, the expectation was shift gears according to the Public Health Order, the shelter in place, you know, one of the guidelines actually referenced for businesses to now officially re, or I'm sorry, use single-use plastics. Now you need to basically, instead of using reusable dishes, right, and that was the thought process, is we want to eliminate the possibility of COVID infection, so no more washing dishes, no more having customers use dishes that you're going to take to the back and wash, we'd rather use disposables, which is going to encourage the landfill use. It's going to increase the cost of the landfill use, and all of a sudden, we're hitting literally the consumer and the business community from two different angles, both of them paying for the cost of these rules. So I strongly encourage the Board to support what it means to protect the public. They can only afford so much. We're asking them to basically snap under the weight of our rules. I would discourage us supporting anything having to do with the rate increase right now. Those are my strong sentiments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Hernandez.
And Mr. Chair, we could conduct the public hearing, close the public hearing, and then continue it to a future date for action, so that the public hearing is actually closed. We calculate the number of protests received as of today, and then the Board can take whatever action it wants at some other future point in time.
Okay, so for the purpose of meeting deadlines, we open it up to the public?
Yes.
We close it, and then defer this to the next available board meeting?
Yes.
Is that okay with the rest of the board members?
Okay.
I'm going to open it up. Do you have any speakers?
Elia, if you could please state your name.
Good afternoon, Elia Salinas. I have opposed to this rate increase from the very beginning. I spoke to the City Council meeting, and I asked Recology to stay the rate increase for one year, or not charge their customers for a few months. Stating that they will not seize their accounts and continue to collect the trash is not to say that money is not due at the end of the month, just like the no evasion. The consumer still has to pay the bill. The consumer still has lost their job, and doesn't have the money, and the amount is increasing. Kathleen and Recology, I can't remember who the representative is, your story, your report today is completely different than what you did last night. Okay? I reached out to city staff. Kathleen, you last night denied that you'd never heard that I was trying to reach out to you. You talked to staff, you even got attorneys involved, because I have a problem with the fact that you sent out notices under Prop 218 for property owners. The rate payer should have the right to protest this increase. There was confusion. Also, someone pointed out last night at the City Council meeting, that the notices did not go out in Spanish. The notices did not go out to all rate payers. I have contacted supervisors within the last two months when we've been going through this, letting them know that their constituents are telling me that they're not getting notices. You have a duty to your consumers, to your rate payers. You can't contractually stay a pay increase for a whole year. I have been talking about this for weeks and months, from the very beginning, when this notices came forward. I did not speak at the Board of Supervisors meeting, and unfortunately, it went under the consent item. Why is it now, all of a sudden, and you know that I've been doing this, all of a sudden, now you're saying that you can go to your Board of Supervisors, your Board? Why didn't you do that before? Do you really not have any interest for what is going on in the economy right now? You have the duty, and you could have had the opportunity to go to the Board and ask the Board, hey, let's help these people out. The fuel costs are down, so you cannot tell me that this is going to cover fuel increase. You did not raise the salary of your employees to be able to validate the increase. This is the third pay increase that you're asking the citizens to do. This is absolutely unethical.
Thank you, Elia.
We have no more public comment. If you wish to make a comment, press star nine or raise your hand.
No more? Okay, oh, close it? And then, Barbara? So we will, we will move this item to the next available board meeting, correct?
I'm sorry, if we could clarify. Kathleen, are you ready to tally the protest at this point in time? No? Okay, then we'll close it and we'll continue.
Barbara, the county clerk is supposed to be the person to tally the majority, excuse me, the protest notices. They were directed to the county clerk.
Okay, why don't we continue it, and we'll have a report at the next meeting about the number of protests received? If we can continue it to date in time certain, which would be June 26th at 9:00 AM?
29.
I'm sorry, June 29th at 9:00 AM.
Does that mean that people can still turn in their protests up until that day?
No, the public hearing was closed, so they cannot turn in any more protests, but we'll consider what to do at the next meeting, if we could make a motion for the June 29th meeting at 9:00 o'clock.
Okay.
Just one last comment, is once again, you need 2,453 votes in order to be on this protest. Last night, the City of Hollister, how many votes did they tally up? Kathleen?
Kathleen, yeah, it was approximately 200.
And they had 9,000 that went out, is that correct?
Hollister, 9,485 were mailed out. The number of protests that were needed in Hollister were 4,700. Hollister, nine thousand four hundred and eighty-five were mailed out. The number of protests that were needed in Hollister were four thousand seven hundred and forty-four. And Christine Black, they the city clerk had given me the number prior to the city council meeting and she said it was actually approximately two hundred protests. And then there were a couple of a couple of public speakers at the city council meeting, including Elia Salinas.
Yes, thank you very much ma'am, I appreciate it.
Okay, based on that information, we're going to at the next available twenty ninth meeting. Okay, you don't need no motion from us, just automatically.
If you could continue it, that'd be great.
All right, is there a motion to continue it to the twenty ninth meeting?
Yes, so moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries five zero. Just for the record Supervisor Gillio and Supervisor Medina second it. Thank you. Do we go to call session or we go to the next item?
Go to the next item.
The next, okay, now we're going to hear twenty eight, right?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In light of COVID, there's there's been some allocation of fundings from the fed federal government and disseminated to the state as well as to counties and cities. And this is the CARES Act established Coronavirus Relief Fund. And it was available under section code six oh one A of the Social Security Act and added to by added by section five thousand and one of the Corona virus Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act CARES Act. So with that, I just wanted to highlight that staff's been working many hours on this trying to establish some programming over the last month too probably that we've been working on this. And we've also had our ad hoc to help us out with regards to the businesses and the nonprofits and the allocation of funds. So I want to thank Supervisor Batello and Supervisor Hernandez for their work in in meeting with us staff on this. Dulce has been spearheading this. We've also had other nonprofits and other folks helping us out as well. But with that, I'll go ahead and hand it off to Dulce and she's has a presentation for your board. Dulce?
Thank you, board members, and I know it's later on on the day, so we'll go through this. But I want to say thank you to the both supervisors and all their input and and really trying to put together a plan on on how to best serve the our local community. So we'll go through that. So CARES Act, a big overview nationally, a hundred and fifty billion dollars were allocated to coronavirus relief. The state of California was allocated fifteen point three billion. Of that approximately five five million went directly to bigger jurisdictions that had the population of over five hundred thousand individuals. The rest went to the state and they allocated to each jurisdiction. So from that, San Bernardino's share is six point four two eight million that we will receive July first to spend on any necessary expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency. There's limitations on what this money cannot be spent on and I want to make that very clear in the beginning. It cannot be spent on any revenue shortfalls, projections for government or if we do any grant programs for any businesses that we give the the grants to. So I just want to make that that clear, that it doesn't cover any revenue shortfalls. It doesn't replace revenue that a business or or local government would have anticipated. And and there's a there's criteria and guidance that that state what you can spend it on, so we'll go through that shortly.
Mr. Chair and Dulce, if I may, and then also too, just so the board is aware, I know that there's been some bills at the federal level that are trying to address those particular elements, the shortfalls in government, to make us whole during these times. So there I again, it's going through the process. I know that there's been some some holdup on that. But but definitely, there's some legislations being worked on at the federal level for that. Go ahead Dulce.
So there's so this funding, there's three key elements that that kind of limit how we can spend the funding. So so it's any any expense related to COVID nineteen emergency from March first up to December thirtieth. And also, it can't be spent on items that the county budgeted for as of March twenty seven, twenty twenty. So so here's a list of the Treasury put out a guidance for states and local governments on what what how these funds can be spent. And so the six items include any any medical-related expenses, public health expenses, payroll expense specifically for public safety, public health, healthcare, human services or any employee who substantially dedicated their time mitigating or responding to COVID nineteen health emergency. There's also it can be used for expenses to be compliant with COVID nineteen. Expenses associated with provision of economic support in connection of COVID nineteen public health emergency. And then lastly, any other related expense reasonably necessary for local government to function. So so that's that's how we we can spend the money. So the timeline, we should receive the funding from the state July first, twenty twenty. Our allocation was part of the governor's May revision and our allocation was laid out on there. September first marks the halfway mark of of coronavirus. So we should be at least or have spent half of the the funding by then. If we don't spend all the funding by December thirtieth, twenty twenty, we have to give it back. Yeah.
I want to ask through the chair to say, because I think that's a real important point right right here. We want to make sure we spend six point four mil- million. And we're you know, ideally, we want to get it allocated out into the community, both in the business and nonprofits and make sure our our costs are reimbursed for you know, government. Does the money, say we allocate to a business through a grant? And but that's spent, that's but the business could probably utilize that going forward.
They just have to spend it in in following CARES Act, right? So so they can't spend it to to fill any shortfall in revenue. And I have a slide explaining kind of what I've been working with the with both supervisors and and a small ad hoc. But we kind of lay out how they can spend that money, but yes, you're right.
Right, yeah.
Can I clarify that real quick, Matthew? I think I think what because I was asking the question as well, just so once once we allocate the funds prior to halfway, September first, December thirtieth, we allocate it all out, does the business have to spend it before December thirtieth? Or the nonprofit or the or can they have it in their account for the next year after December thirtieth?
I I did read that if we subcontract, it did have to be spent by December thirtieth. And that's my understanding, but I could clarify to make sure.
Okay, thank you.
So my understanding is they have to spend it by December thirtieth as well.
We need to get out very quick quickly because they need to be able to utilize it as well.
Yeah.
Stu, I got two questions. First question is I'm looking at their eligible expenses and it's mostly seems like it's government. That's not accurate, right? It's government and non-government too, right?
They have they have guidance and they've they've put out a Q and A. And and I'll go through more through the further slides and I think it'll answer some of those questions. But it could be used for to support small businesses in our local economy. And it specifically says that in the Q and A.
Okay, because my understanding, that's going to be one of the recommendations, right, to support local businesses.
Correct.
And then my second question, and this reference to Supervisor Gillio, is that the money has to be the monies has to be spent by December thirty, two thousand twenty.
Correct.
How do you prevent or how do you know what monies are being spent? Because you know, once it goes into somebody's account, you could commingle, you know, monies from other locations. Do you just have to show that you made expenditures before December thirtieth, twenty twenty? Is that the magic formula that we're looking for, the invoices?
For the business, let me move forward on.
Okay.
And and I'll go back to the proposed budget. But so part of that would be an application process. And maybe it's a testation or reporting back after we we provided funding thirty days for them. I have Enrique here and we've we've discussed workforce development being the lead on managing this funding and working with businesses to ensure that that they are following CARES Act. And we're in the process of developing applications and a testation that that they did actually have or experience an economic impact to their businesses. So so we're working on them. A lot of it is is based on trust and and them providing us documents and information, but that's a very valid concern.
I think, well, just to clarify a bit, especially since it's focused on COVID nineteen impacts, some of this stuff could could easily be retroactive and proven. I mean, if you have a business that that with some of the guidelines, you have the the shield or that that what is it? It's like a polycarbonate plastic, you know, kind of like in the in the banks and stuff. If you've paid for it, it's obviously if you're a restaurant and you've you're not normally going to see that inside of a restaurant, which if you see it now, it's very easy to prove that that was specific to COVID nineteen response. You know, and and a lot of opportunities that have businesses have had to take place like measures basically when it comes to mitigating, now having a loss in revenue from in-store. Now they're having an online presence, they're building a website, they're having a purchasing opportunity online to to do takeout and delivery. Those kind of things by default are opportunities that businesses had to do to be able to mitigate the impacts themselves. So that to me, there's that there's obvious things that that make it very, very easy to to measure, right? As long as you have a receipt, you know, or something to that effect, you can prove that you paid for it out of your business account, then it should be something that that could be covered under the COVID nineteen impacts. So just for clarification, thanks, Mr. Chair.
So I'm gonna so this is the the proposed budget for the six million four hundred and twenty-eight thousand. So one point five mil would go to support our local economy for business, small business grants. And and I'll go more into the details on what we envisioned for the the small business grant. We would have five hundred thousand for nonprofit relief, five hundred thousand for community programming and or if we see an additional need for nonprofits or businesses, we can kind of revert the money there. IT infrastructure, PP PPE and medical, oh, IT infrastructure, it would be one point five mil. PP and medical infrastructure, one million. County necessary expenditures not covered by FEMA, one point one two eight mil. And and then leave a three hundred thousand for reserves for the CEO's office and and the ad hoc members composing of Supervisor Batello and Hernandez to kind of guide discussion on on how that how that money should be spent based based on our community needs. So that that's just a a brief outline and proposed budget of that funding.
And one of the things, Mr. Chair, if I may, is the importance of spending the money and the flexibility and the time, amount of time. And six months is not a lot of time to spend this and to make sure we dot our i's and cross our t's with everything. So if for some reason, to say, the business grant program, we're not able to, you know, spend or the money's not going out, we need to be quick at adjusting that money and putting it in a different location so it can be spent or or spending it. So that was that was one of the reasons why we had our request and a little flexibility with that. And and just really the importance of of getting the money out to our community. We don't want to have this money go back to the state and then have it delivered or sent to some other part of the state.
Yeah, and and part of accepting the funding, we do have to fill out a very simple form saying that we we we're going to follow the CARES Act guidelines. We don't have to share proposed budget. This is just internal for the board to kind of decide how we want to allocate or what we want to focus our money on. And so I'm going to I'm going to cover each topic in a little bit of details on what we envision and how we can spend that that funding. So starting with the business grant program. So really, the overview would be to designate grants in in a from twenty two thousand five hundred up to fifteen thousand. And we would set a criteria based on on the size of business, how many employees they have and and have some criteria as how they would qualify for for smaller grants based on overhead. And that the bigger grants would go to businesses that have more more of a need and more of an overhead expense. The proposed guideline, proposed timeline to roll this program out would be to to open it up July sixth for two weeks. Following that, the county would work through Workforce Development Board. And Enrique, do you want to add anything? Oh, yeah, one sec. Okay, so there would be a review process of the application. We would then notify businesses and we'd have to work with auditing. But to get the businesses a check no later than September first of twenty twenty is is kind of the the overarching goals. The the supervisors did lay out three criterias that that would they would be funneled in in priority. First priority would come to businesses that are currently closed in stage three and four. The second second tier would be businesses in in stages one and two of the governor's order. And then the the third priority would be given to essential businesses. So that's kind of the the foundation we've laid out. And and I'll invite Enrique to share some information on workforce development. But kind of what these funds would be allowed to use for would be any any expense that occurred from March first up to December thirtieth. And it includes payroll, operating expense, business lease or rent, any expenses for telework or equipment cost, inventory acquisition, so anything needed for them to reopen their doors, any PPE, any anything to make their facility ready that encourages social distancing would be allowable expenditures. But I wanted to invite Enrique.
Actually, before Enrique comes up, I've got a question and I think more to both the the committee members. So the list, the priority, Stu said, tell me where I'm wrong here. Is the first one is those who are in those who are closed by the Corona, right? And then after that is stage three and four?
Yeah, one and two.
I'm I'm sorry, one and two, and then the third one is three and four?
The the third priority would be so first first prioritize the ones that are closed and then the the last would be essential, so tier three.
If a if a company that was closed received a a PP loan, would they would they be eligible for these again?
That that's another element that that the supervisors wanted to include to make sure that if if they did receive funding, they they weren't prioritized. We don't we don't want to eliminate them completely, but we wanted to focus on on those businesses that didn't receive any funding. So I guess depending on how many applicants we get in, we would first focus on on the tiers and then finalize them through a criteria.
Yeah, I if I could add, Mr. Chairman, I think Supervisor Hernandez probably has done a lot of outreach and and contacts with the smaller, smaller businesses. The one-two-person shops really weren't able to take advantage of PPP and some of these other programs. And and those are the people that we're trying to help.
Yeah, the so the the basic sentiment, Mr. Chair, and members of the board is focusing on those that were most impacted first. They are prioritized first in line and there definitely has to be a metric or a measurement that says, did you get PPP? Did you get SBA, the Economic Injury Disaster Loan? If you got those, maybe we put you further back in the line and prioritize those that maybe got one or you know, maybe even the the benefit, right? So there's a subtle nuance, but yeah, the the main focus is prioritizing those that were the most severely impacted and then walk it backwards. So there's a subtle nuance, but yeah, the, the main focus is prioritizing those that were the, the most severely impacted and then walk it backwards.
How about, how about those companies that closed doors?
Voluntarily?
Voluntarily, or I just, I don't know, what's the best phrase to say? That, an injection of the, of these money, all they're doing is just, you know, prolonging that they're gonna actually close doors because somehow the business model just doesn't fit with today's time. Uh, is there a mechanism to, to make sure that we're not throwing good money at, at, at a bad opportunity?
Yeah, so part of the, um, the, the application, the, the um, draft application.
We put like uh, thirty days, so you have to be in business for another thirty days and.
You gotta commit to staying open.
You, you have to remain open at least thirty days after you receive the, the funding, so.
I think it should be a little longer, but.
And, and you have to be in operations for at least a year prior to May first.
A year prior to applying?
Yeah.
That's, that's a, that's a good foundation. That's a good one.
So at least it's, it's, it's um, businesses that were um, established prior to COVID and they didn't fail because of, they were um, entrepreneurs or new businesses opening up during this time.
You know, I, I'll, I'll say how I feel. I, I mean, I don't want these monies, and I'm just one supervisor here. I don't want these monies going to a business that's already gonna fail regardless of a Corona nineteen or not. I wanna make sure that we can bridge that gap, we can build a couple of bricks on that bridge where it helps them from the Corona nineteen situation, that they continue going business.
Well, and, and on top of that, Mr. Chair, I don't wanna get ahead of Doosse, but I know part of the element of the focus of the second round is now considering programming that the goal then is for to, to keep you open. Or maybe there's certain things that help support the impacts that you, maybe you didn't, uh, you, you, you hadn't considered. And now there's programming that maybe through EDC or the Chamber can now help with mitigating any, any future impacts from COVID nineteen. And that's gonna be maybe an ongoing conversation, but at least the, the thought is there is to say that second round, how could we now help you solidify your business going forward to keep you around a whole lot longer? But again, I know it's gotta be focused on COVID nineteen impacts.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may, add a little bit to that too as well, is, is you gotta also consider, we don't have a lot of time. So if we get into the details and really wanna scrutinize every little bit, we're gonna be out, we, we won't get the program developed till the end, till December. And it will, will lose the funding. So I think, as one example to this, is that, those are some discussions where we're just gonna go ahead and de- develop a program for those that maybe did not receive PPP, uh, or, you know, any other help. Well, with that though, that may be a small number. So we put this out there and then a few people respond and, because no one else qualifies. And then we're gonna go back out again and request, can you, you know, more applications? And that's gonna take, that could take a month just with that alone. So we're requesting to get everybody to apply and, and try to scrutinize it a little bit more and have a committee uh, created to actually review that and then kinda prioritize, um, you know, the most needy first and then go down the list. That, so that's the whole premise of, of having a little bit more flexibility so we can get the money out as soon as possible.
Yeah, and, and just another quick thought is, parallel to, so, so there's urgency in spending the money, obviously, which is one organizational structure, which is already happening. But then there's the second, which is the ongoing conversation about the impacts and then filtering it down to ultimately still being focused on getting those monies out there. But uh, but making sure that we're doing our due diligence with those folks, right, follow-up. So it doesn't mean we're, we're, we're not spending them, we're spending it, but then we're, we're, we're having maybe a, a, an ongoing conversation with the business community via the Chamber, via EDC. Um, just to try to make sure that we're doing our due diligence.
Yeah, and, and that's a good point. Um, I, I do wanna share, um, we, we have a very, a draft version of the, the grant program, um, which we've shared with, or we've gotten input from, from our um, local community organization, business organization, um, including Stanlon Committee, um, EDC, um, Business Council, the Chambers and, and Downtown Association and, and Workforce Development. And we're, we're all working together on, on what, what are the needs of, of our business community here? And, and how could um, this program serve, serve most um, here locally? So, um, we are working with them. I, I would like to invite Enrique and kinda share what his role would be as the, as um, leading, leading the program.
Yeah, I also wanna thank Enrique and Tracy for taking this on. Um, and obviously it's, it's short notice. And um, you know, there's a lot of work, there's a lot of, gonna be, be a lot of work here, a lot of heavy lifting over the next six months. So I just wanted to thank your team uh, for taking this on, Enrique.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, the Workforce Development Board is, is actually very excited that this program is gonna be rolled out uh, in an effort to assist the local businesses who have been impacted by COVID nineteen. For those of you who may not be too familiar with the Workforce Development Board, uh, we are the workforce system that provides workforce services and training to our local job seekers and provides assistance for local businesses. Uh, we are the ones that operate the America's Job Center and have uh, programs for youth, dislocated workers, uh, progress for layoff aversion, and progress for adult to get into different types of training. Uh, I've discussed this with the Workforce Development Board Executive Committee. We have scheduled a, a meeting for this Friday to discuss the rollout of this program. To, to identify the, the process, the establishment of committee members 'cause part of the selection committee will review all the applications. And there's close to two thousand businesses that would perhaps be eligible. So the goal is to prioritize the, it according to the tier system and to review and determine what tier system they belong to. And then eventually the uh, uh, committee will review and evaluate and make certain recommendations. So uh, I wanted just to give you a quick update on the board's, uh, Workforce Development Board's uh, recent discussions and excited of this program that will be rolled over. So, thank you, thank you.
Enrique, I got questions for you. And, and again, I'll ask, I ask, I'll ask you the question that what I asked Doosse and my fellow supervisors is, is there a measure that you're gonna use to make sure that you're not throwing good money at bad companies that, that you know they're gonna fail?
The provision that is stated here in the draft guidelines, the guidelines that you may have in front of you, from what I read, it does have that provision that if there's a business that is closed right now and they don't open thirty days after, they would need to return the money. Uh, so that is the framework that we're marching forward, and I completely see your point. We don't wanna just throw money out there and then they remain closed and it didn't quite help. So I would say that provision is in place and we'll need to make sure that the committee fully is aware of that and we know how to screen for that as well.
So, wha- what is it that, what strong-arm tactic are you gonna use to make sure that if that company's closed, you get your money back? What is it that, are you gonna ask them to, to, to forfeit or um, guarantee their assets, their operations or?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, might help you a little bit. Um, you know, one of the things that this program is kinda geared for small businesses. We could, uh, I, I don't know what the total uh, awards are, be for the grant, but the grants aren't gonna be that much money. It's, we're not talking about a hundred thousand dollars here for our businesses. We're looking to target small businesses, twenty-five hundred to fifteen thousand. Fifteen thousand, as you know, is pocket change. Uh, to probably even to a small business, it's not a lot of money. Your rent is a couple thousand a month for a small little shop uptown here. Uh, we're going to request that you, uh, a valid business license, uh, you know, for the two cities and, and the county is part of the criteria. We're trying to protect it as best we can. But at the end of the day, um, if there is a little bit of uh, you know, uh, people not being completely honest, you have that with any social program or any programs that uh, a person could participate in. And we're trying to guard that. I think we're better stewards with money and knowing our community than the federal government or the state government.
Well, I, and, and that's my point, you know, I see grant, I can see grant funds out there. And I, I mean, if that's the case, let's roll out the money, give it to, to the most maximum number of organizations out there. To a lot of the businesses, roll it out, put them, put a list, one, two, three. The closed one, the companies that are closed, those are the ones we emphasize on, and just keep going down the list and until the last sentence spent on this account, and without any conditions. This is money, it came from the state, came from the federal, came out of care. Here we're gonna support our local businesses and here it is without any, any, any requirements. With the exception of what Supervisor Batello said, you know, you gotta have a license here, give it to them. That's the fastest and shortest way because I, I hate, I mean, it scares me when racist, we got, we're under the gun. If I were to say no to a lot of those, we're under the guns, I would've, I would've slept better. Unfortunately, when someone says we're under the gun, it's because it's a nasty situation or what we're about to encounter, a program that we don't even know what road to take. And, and a better idea is just give it to as many businesses out there we have and maximize the number of dollars. I mean, that, that's my position, and that's the same argument I'm gonna make on the nonprofits too.
I, I just wanna add, there's very specific guidelines under, under CARE Act and their statute of how we can spend this money. So we can't just give it to.
Fine, give them a list, you gotta spend it on, on a wall. You gotta spend it to make sure it's Corona, you gotta spend it on PPE. Give it, but let's help out the maximum number of businesses that we have in our community. Because every single business, Jim Gillio's here, Anthony Batello's here, I'm here, Mark Medina's here, Peter Hernandez is. We have all suffered from Corona nineteen in some way or another. Every single business out in San Benito County has, we're on the same boat. Give it out to all the organizations in the community.
Well, if I may, Mr. Chair, I, I, I agree. I mean, for the sake of expediency, we want the biggest bang to hit right away. But um, within the context of the focus and I, 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 I think I, and I appreciate Supervisor Batello and, and admin focusing on what it means to roll this out in a way that, that's, that's efficient, that it's doing our due diligence. I mean, we can't just ignore that, especially since there's liability with improper use of these funds, right? Because it, it requires that it be used specifically for COVID impacts, you can't just ignore that. Um, but, but the long-term perspective, in, in my mind, I think to, if we truly are trying to be successful in supporting our business community and on our profits, we have to create uh, metrics or measurements that expects a certain outcome. And when we're talking about outcomes, I mean, I know that short-term funding is one thing, but long-term, there's gotta be a structure in place that supports these businesses, which is why, I mean, the board of supervisors just support, supported EDC uh, being funded. And, 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 you know, there's certain things that we've actually been pretty engaged with, with the Chamber of Commerce, that's been really successful. I know that even with the rollout of the impacts, we're trying to do our homework, we had Chamber of Commerce doing a survey. So nonetheless, my point is, is this is an ongoing relationship. There's actually talks about what it means to even include these businesses with maybe even a membership to an organization that has supporting services for ongoing ben- ultimately the ongoing benefit of that organization, that business, right? We're trying to create a network in that sense of businesses so that we, we become a community of businesses, helping each other, community of nonprofits, working together. I mean, especially in this divisive environment, I don't wanna beat that drum too much. Um, this is a good opportunity now to be used in a way that actually brings us together to the, at the table instead of dividing us. So that's why I think, I, I get your sentiment, especially with expediency. Um, I think this is also, there's a greater opportunity that we're probably missing out on if we don't, if we don't consider what that means. You know, I think the Chamber would be an amazing, uh, on the boots-on-the-ground element to support our businesses. Uh, and, and that's what we're, we're thoroughly vetting. And, and I think to a certain extent, we need to give credit to our staff for really trying to make sure that we do our due diligence. Those are my comments, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Hernandez, and you can't, you can't have the same criteria for supporting businesses and supporting nonprofits because.
You're right.
They're totally different business models. A business is to make a profit. A nonprofit is, is to provide services to the community and profit is not something they, they equate in their business model. And so I hope that the committee, when you were talking about nonprofits too, was a whole different set of criterias, away from, from the business.
Maybe with that, so we're still on the business side of it. And there's a committee, the Workforce Board, that is to help us vet out, you know, the uh, the application process. And we kinda gave some guidelines, some ideas, and that's probably, might even change as we evaluate uh, the process even further uh, coming into the deadline. But I, I think it's important that, you know, the board of supervisors participate on the, on this committee as well as the EDC or, and Chamber of Commerce has to have a role on it too. And we're, you know, that's a get, uh, get a lot of work done uh, through different eyes and uh, goals. So I, and that, and that's also take place with the uh, the nonprofits, I hope. And, and maybe we'll hear from a couple, Gary Burns or Vicky Vortino in a little bit. But um, you know, it's a lot of work. And I think Supervisor Hernandez and I were up for the task and we're, we're, we're do this right.
Yeah.
And, and I appreciate, don't take me wrong, you guys did a lot of good work, I understand. I'm just bringing out what I have experienced as supervisor the last fifteen-plus years. Supervisor Gillio?
And then we finish up with the presentation, 'cause a lot of these questions are answered in here, like what a business can use the funds for, it's on the slide there. But there's a couple other great slides and I'd just like to hear the rest of the presentation if you're okay with that, before we ask any more questions.
We must have opportunity for discussion, absolutely, yes, go ahead, Doosse.
So um, for the, the nonprofit relief and um, like, like Anthony Batello mentioned, we, we have been in conversations um, with, with Community Foundation and United Way. Uh, they already have a COVID nineteen program um, that they would quickly be able to, to pivot a program like this if we wanted them to. Um, we, we had preliminary discussions um, a- about them possibly leaving, leading a program like this. Um, however, discussions with our, with our budget officer and going over the, the guidance were not clear that it specifically outweighs nonprofit. It does, the guidance does recommend, does say we can do grants for small businesses. Um, so it's something we, staff needs to do research on and clarify that this is an allowable um, expense to, to nonprofits. So um, so I just wanna make that clear that um, it, it is, it is COVID-related impacts. However, it doesn't specifically lay out nonprofits, it does say grants for small businesses. Um, so we're gonna work on that and, and make sure that this is an allowable expense of, of these fund, funding.
When will you know? That's important, timing is important.
Yes. And.
Uh, hi everyone, uh, Stuart Potry, County Budget Officer. Um, to answer that question, it's not actually written anywhere in the guidance. So um, I'm actually proposed to talk to the county auditor about looking at our outside auditor um, to see if they could give us some guidance on that, um, because it is not written in there. So we're gonna try to work on that this week and get an answer really soon because we do need to spend these mo- we do have a limited time to spend these funds.
Okay, should we put this nonprofit discussion to, to hold it to the next meeting or, or continue it?
We, we could, so um, at the end, the recommendation's gonna be um, to, to um, to allow the CEO, working with the ad hoc uh, committee, to kind of work on, on the funding of allocations. Um, and, and here's a, a broad range of, or here's a recommendation of the budget as proposed. So we could, we could kind of keep that funding aside to bring back to the board or how, whatever you guys.
Mr. Chair, if I may, we're gonna continue with this nonprofit allocation of funds and we're gonna continue to develop the program. We have to do that, we can't, we don't have time to sit on our, on our laurels about that. It is gray, there are other gray areas within the CARES Act as well. Um, the, the utilization of these funds to help assist cover, covering the Great Plates Program as an example for our share, which is about six and a half, seven percent of our funding. My understanding is that these funds can be used for that. And some of the reasons why that there is like, it's not, it's not quoted anywhere, it's, it's gray. But the fact is, the question remains, this, these are federal monies that are coming down for the Great Plates Program as an example, right? The state and the feds are picking up the lion's share of it, the local government's paying, picking up another portion. Well, this, 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 these funds are also federal funds. Normally, you can't use federal funds to pay the, the local portion, but in this case you can 'cause it's left out, it's left out of the, of the documentation. So that's, that's the gray area that, that Doosse is talking about. I think, I think in light of that, we're gonna use the same model, that we're gonna continue to move forward with that. I think we have to do that, and if there's any issues before any dispers- we'll, we'll have a definite answer before dispersment.
So in a sense, we're moving forward and I'll hold my questions to.
One, one other thing I'd like to have for clarity to the board as well is the question that Supervisor, I think Supervisor Batello and Gillio had mentioned about actually expending the money within the fiscal year if we give it to a, a business. Um, I got word um, from one of our representatives that advocate for us at the state level saying that as soon as the dispersment, uh, they're understanding, as soon as that dispersment is made to that business, that suffices this, this, as the dispersment for the year. So just so the board understands that, and here's that, and we'll make sure that.
So if it's July first, they got the whole fiscal year, July first of June thirtieth on next.
When we disperse it in August or in September. When we disperse it in August or in September or October, that is sufficient enough to show that we spent the money.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay.
After that, who cares, right?
That's right.
Okay. Go ahead, Dulce.
All right, so five hundred thousand would be allocated for community programming or nonprofit, small businesses, if a second round is is needed. But for community programming, we can do programs as laid out in the guidance, such as grants for individuals or families facing economic hardships. So, we can do grants to help individuals pay utility fees, as long as those fees don't come back to us. So, so for example, like the the city of of Hollister manages the water utility, so so fees can't go back to to the local government. But but the, but we, or we can do grants to to help evictions or assist individuals that are, to prevent them from becoming homeless and and assist them with a mortgage or rent program. So, these fundings can be used for 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 programs like that. Also, any expenses for care of homeless population to mitigate the effects of COVID nineteen. It could also be used for any any quarantine individuals. Another, another program that can be done is, it could cover the cost of providing COVID nineteen testing. And that's if, once the California Optum leaves, that could be an option too. So, so those are a few programs that that we could do with community programming. We have, we haven't laid out exactly what we would do, but those are all available options. So, for IT infrastructure, that would be one million five hundred thousand. And what this would cover is to improve any telework capabilities for public employees. So, we've identified some projects that we would use as funding for, and they they include voiceover internet protocol. So, that that would allow the county to upgrade our telephone system so that we, employees can work from home and do call forwarding. Current systems we have now does not allow us to do an all-county building. So, this would be all countywide and and give us that availability. Another one would be laptops for remote access. So, in the last round, forty laptops were purchased, and currently, there's about two hundred individuals with laptops, with active laptops. However, the lifeline of of those laptops are near the end, so it would be to replace those and and purchase additional laptops. So, that would be another expense. Then there's also con connections slash access. And this would be to upgrade departmental and core switches that would allow more people to remote in, because our current infrastructure wouldn't support remote working, so. I don't. Ray, do you wanna add anything on?
One comment on this topic.
Yes, yes.
Just encourage our team and the ad hoc board to to consider our EOC and the communications capabilities of our EOC. Clearly, we've been using our EOC the entire time with COVID. And I would really, we've been talking about this for quite some time to make sure that we have this updated and ready for the quote-unquote next disaster, or perhaps dealing with the tail end of this disaster, so please consider that. Thank you.
Dulce?
Yes.
I did wanna add one thing on the IT infrastructure improvements. Depending upon the funding we have left, it might be wise, this would be probably Ray's area too, is maybe talk to the schools, because I know since there'll be a lot of people working or learning from home, there are some people that do not have internet access. I know they're selling blocks of hotspots and blocks of internet access through, you know, certain companies. That might be something we might wanna look at to assist the schools if we have, if we have the excess funding.
Thank you. And that's one of the things that we were also discussing was for remote asset access for your constituents, maybe like in the Canyon, San Juan Canyon, or in Supervisor Gillio's district out in South County, some maybe getting some hotspots or something that people can access and be able to access to meetings. So, that's something else that we've been looking at and discussing too, yeah.
Well, they live in South County for a reason.
You said it. Go ahead, Dulce.
So, PPE, we allocated or proposed budgets, one million for PPE. And this would be to acquire additional PPE, and this includes sanitizing sanitizing products and and personal protective equipment, such as surgical mask and gloves and other things along those lines. And.
Actually, hold on, Dulce. I got a response to this. No, go back to the, go to the next one.
Next.
That one. I remember when we were talking about providing some monies set aside, and I remember Supervisor Gillio saying, hopefully, we'll get, you know, funded from FEMA, and somehow we'll hopefully get funded some of the way. And every day since that, Supervisor Gillio, I've always thought about you, and today, this is it right here, right here.
Hey, we're getting repaid.
We're getting repaid.
Good job documenting it all for your team.
So, so the next, it's a one one million one hundred and twenty-eight thousand allocated to the county to cover any necessary expenditures due to COVID nineteen that aren't covered by FEMA reimbursement. And some, some of these expenditures or allowable expenses are outlined in the guidance. But I I just added a few on here. And we're allowed to do payroll for public, public safety, public health, healthcare, health and human services, and employees who are substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to COVID nineteen. So, the key word there is substantially. And there's, on the, on the, on the questions and clarification and what does substantially mean? It just, it defines it as spending most of their time mitigating COVID nineteen. So, so that's an allowable expense, whereas FEMA only allows overtime or anything that wasn't anticipated. So, so so this funding can be used for for things of that nature. Also, expenses of establishing temporary medical facilities and other measures to increase COVID nineteen treatment. And they, they also include any construction cost. So, we're able to plan out for if we anticipate another stirred or converted building, that the construction costs would be included. Also, expenses for providing paid sick leave and and paid family and medical leave to public employees to enable compliance with COVID nineteen are are also an allowable expense. And and there's a list of of other eligible expenses that we may be able to to use that's not covered by FEMA, but that's there. And that is it for now. So, so the recommendation is to delegate authority to CAO to allocate CARES Act funding so that so that we do spend it. So, we move quickly and are able to to spend it all with the with the recommendation and approval of the ad hoc to recovery committee and to Board of Supervisors.
And I I would like to add, Mr. Chairman, one of the things, I think we approved it today for the extra meeting in July. It was, I think that is really critical for us to come back to the full board and give an update on the rollout of of this whole program. And, you know, that that was one of the reasons I, you know, requested to to the chair that we have 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 this meeting in July to make sure we're we're on track and everything's kind of clicking. Yesterday, when Supervisor Hernandez, myself, and the the staff were talking about this presentation, you know, we we want to make sure we spend every six million four hundred thousand, twenty eight thousand, and be in position for more money, not send it back. That's what's really important. So, we're working really hard to get this out. Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess this is more of a comment to both the committee members and and to Enrique, who will be handling a lot of this money to make sure that the public benefits from it. And that is that I'm okay with all the other, all the proposed dollar amounts, with the exception of the nonprofit relief fund. I really have issues with it. I actually called, I emailed Gary Burns, and and I CC on that email, right? And the only response I got from Gary Burns is, yeah, we'll get, we'll get together. Well, today's Tuesday. The guy never called me back, so I'm okay with that. He did email me back, but he never called me back and says, let's meet and let me talk about what are your concerns are. I don't want the money going to Community Foundation, I'll be honest. I'm not comfortable going with the, what is it, the United Way right now. I I prefer that Enrique's department takes care of that money, because I wanna make sure that we maximize the number of organizations that could could get these dollars. I'm talking about small mom-and-pops organizations like sports clubs, like the Little League clubs, like the soccer club, a mom-and-pop, a single, single ladies club, school site councils. They put, they do a lot of fundraising for their kids to provide facilities and books and all that to to their kids. And those type of traditional organizations don't, don't qualify for the United Way or for Community Foundation programming, because there are so many requirements. You gotta have a controller in place. You gotta put your money in our accounts. You gotta do this. And there's a three percent, five percent administration overcharge. I don't want any of that stuff being associated with these nonprofit money. I honestly believe that we should, every single dollar should go out there to the communities out there in our, in our community. A lot of organizations that don't get money, don't qualify, those should be given first priority, just like we put a business, a business priority, that anyone who got a PP loan should not qualify first. That's the way we should do it at a nonprofit. Anybody who doesn't get money from Community Foundation or United Way, we should give the money to those organizations that don't qualify for those organizations. That's my opinion, and then I'll I'll rest at that.
If I can, I may, I'm happy we're talking about this right now, and and I think we have some discussion. I don't necessarily disagree with a lot of, I'm concerned about Little League and some of these youth programs too. I serve on the United Way allocations committee with Ms. Fortino and her, and a few other very good people. And this year, the United Way is taking their funding and partnering with the Community Foundation for COVID Relief for a lot of our organizations, the Mayor's House, the Chamberlain's, you you just go down the list, the Food Bank. A lot of these services are absolutely vital, social services, that kinship that just lost all of their fundraising capability. And what they use their fundraising money is to leverage other grant money to bring in more impact. And I I think, no matter what the United Way and and Community Foundation do, they're not gonna fill that gap with, without this help. And and I also kinda feel that, you know, the only way where it's been six point four million is with a lot of help. We need the Workforce Development Board, along with the Chamber with its outreach and its knowledge of the businesses. The same thing needs to be done on the nonprofit side of it. There's, they are, I know for a fact, because I've been part of the process for a number of years now, is that there's a vetting process. How much of the funds are going to each organization, why, what do they intend to use it for? And the 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 leverage of monies. And we go through this every year on the budget cycle with the eighty-seven thousand or whatever we contribute. And it it's always a real battle. And I I think the the combination of the two groups working together, they already got the list. They know what's needed out there for those organizations. And I I agree, Supervisor, Mr. Chairman, I think the list needs to be expanded to take into account some of those real small organizations. And maybe, I know Gary Burns is on, you know, I asked him to be on here so he could comment as far as what their process is. And then we go from there. But that's my feeling, is that we need help getting this out too. And I I I think it it would be a stretch to have have it, the burden on us and start from scratch.
And I understand what you're saying, and I just, I just concerned that the same organizations are gonna get the money. There's that three percent administration cost they're gonna keep. If if these organizations say, you know what? We're not gonna get any, we're not gonna get one single penny. We're doing this in the public's interest. Every single dollar's going to the nonprofits. I can feel more comfortable at ease knowing, okay, that's, that's the commitment they made. They made that promise. Two is that there's, it's an inclusionary of a lot of groups that don't qualify, that usually don't even take consideration when they're distributing their own money. If they can commit those two things that they, one, they're not gonna get any money for their overhead. And two, is that there's gonna be no conditions when they give money to a lot of these groups that that have no ties to these groups, because we're trying to distribute the money to everyone, not just say, we already have a list here, let's just give the money to that list. If they can prove you that, then okay, I'll work with them. Supervisor Medina?
Okay, so the goal, maximize the amount of people slash businesses in a short period of time. I think that's our goal, for people that are needing this. If we personally went to every single smaller business or individual organization, it would be impossible. It would cost staff, overhead, a lot of money to do this. I think it would, more than your three, three percent you're speaking of, Chairman. Secondly, we need a, a, a organization that's already in place. Someone like the United Way, the Community Foundation, where they already have the contacts in order to hit the largest amount of organizations slash people. With that being said, I agree with, we need to look at their inclusion and drill down to make sure that now they go one step further and add more people to their, to their portfolio. I think that's what you're asking. The three percent, in order for us to be successful, there has to be something. I mean, maybe they can, they can go down to a smaller percentage, I don't know, but it takes people in order to make this happen. So, I I agree to you to a point, but we need to make sure that we use an existing foundation already to hit the, to maximize the amount of people we we help. Thank you.
You know, I I think it's, Supervisor Gillio, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay. Just I just wanted to dovetail off of all the comments, and I think all the comments have been made good. I think Supervisor, I'm sorry, Chairman De La Cruz, your, your point is is well-taken. I I know from attending a lot of nonprofit events and listening in the community, I think we have a hundred and fifty-four, I didn't look it up today. So, I'm gonna guess, right now, a hundred and fifty-four active nonprofits in our community. So, if you took a hundred and fifty-four and divided it by, you know, X amount, you could get, you know, everybody gets a couple bucks here and a couple bucks there. I I really think we need this public-private partnership, but I agree with you one hundred percent that it's gotta be equitable across the board, especially to the small organizations, and and it's just gotta be. Because if it's not, we're gonna fail. Same with the small businesses. I didn't make any comments on that, but it's the same thing. There's gotta be a standard practice and a sense of equity, because if it's not, we've already failed before we started. I would highly recommend, with your passion for this, Super, or Chairman De La Cruz, that perhaps you have an ad hoc committee. Anthony Supervisor Battello is already on one of these committees. Maybe you and him join forces to sit on this. Whoever's gonna be handing out the money to make sure it's done in the, in the manner that you think is a, is a fair manner. That's just a thought. Either that or or assign it to a staff member. Those are, those are my thoughts. But we need a public-private partnership. There's no way that we can manage this without the existing framework of, I believe, and there may be other people that I'm forgetting right now, but the ones that have been mentioned here, the two, the Community Foundation and United Way. I think, I think we, we, we need their help, but we gotta make sure that your, your desires are met. Thank you.
Good point, Supervisor Gillio, and I will buy into that concept with one condition, and I hope the the board will support me on this one. And that is that one, Supervisor Battello and I will serve on whatever committees being, will be generated out there. Two, that it's fifty-fifty, fifty to to those connections and fifty to those that never receive any type of funding, which in this case, it'll distribute the money to those that have long-term relationship with current YMCA, or I'm sorry, the United Way and Community Foundation. And then those who don't even know the concept of how to apply for money. Fifty-fifty. If 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 I get the blessing from the board on that, I I will support that.
I'd just be careful on. I'd just be careful in setting the limit right now. Sorry to speak over you. But just because we don't know what's out there. We don't know how many people technically are associated with one of those organizations. I know from being in the nonprofit world and supporting a lot of them personally, a lot of them are associated with the United Way. You probably know better. And, and the Community Foundation. So you may be hamstringing yourself to say, well, we can only give 50%. Because what if 70% or 80% of the nonprofits are already associated with those two groups and only 20% are not? So now we're kind of in a pickle. I'd suggest you guys see what the landscape is before you set that hard limit. But I see what your point is. That's just my, my comments.
Let, let, because a lot of these small groups probably don't need a lot of that money. Let's be honest about that. Let Supervisor Patello and himself have some of that flexibility. Where Supervisor Patello say, you know what, maybe it's 60, 40, or 70, 30. Because of, you know, sometimes these, these groups that have, do, they do have these connections with United Way and Community Foundation, like the Amaya's House or, or, what's that? That the annual thing they always have out there by Belau Park out there?
Kinship.
Kinship. Thank you. Sometimes they need a bigger infusion of money versus a small baseball club or soccer club.
How, how many, I, I'm not saying this because I want recognition, but I donate there and I go to an event. I didn't go this year because of COVID. I want to say it was over 100 and something organizations in the county get a grant from the United Way. So I think what you're going to see is a lot of the nonprofits are associated, but there are some that aren't as well. So I would just encourage you to have an open mind and wait till you learn what the landscape is. Maybe somebody on the phone or maybe our staff knows that as well. I don't know the answer off the top of my head, so I can't give it to you.
We'll make it a personal effort to seek out those, those non-traditional groups that, that do need money. They just don't, don't know how to go for it.
Rotary, I was texting just a second ago. Rotary is an organization that probably doesn't get United Way money, but they, they do a lot of good in, in the community, both the Hollister Club and the San Juan Club. But can I ask the Chair, with all respect, maybe have Gary Burns speak to, to it to kind of address what you're talking about?
Oh, I'm hoping that they can address some of my questions. That's why I kind of bluntly put them out there. So hope they're listening to us and they can respond to my questions. Absolutely. Okay. Is there any further questions Supervisor?
Yeah, I, I'm, if I'm hearing clearly, you guys want me off of this.
No, no, no.
No.
The business part, you and Anthony stated it.
If you want to, I'll, I'll step aside and you can.
It's just the review, the review, the review committee, the review process is what I think Anthony was talking about. Wasn't the allocation, yeah, it was just, that was a separate thing.
Yeah, two separate things.
Two separate things.
So nonprofits, one committee?
Yes. Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. I was a little confused. But then the other element, I know that, you know, it's just a recommendation, obviously, now that you guys are particularly committed, is what the thought is with me and Supervisor Patello is, we have Enrique and, and the Workforce Development be pretty much the, the stopgap. They're the ones that are distributed. It's in conjunction with the Chamber ABCs. That way, there's no favoritism. It stops at, the buck stops at Enrique. And I think to a certain extent, that probably should be the consideration for the nonprofit is, is it starts there. And that way, everything's filtered through them. And it doesn't put, you know, basically all, all the decision-making process in one organization or another. And I, you know, everybody, let's put it this way, to be fair and honest, there's going to be plenty of reasons why everybody wants this money or, or, or needs this money, whether it's valid or not. It's going to take a thorough, fair process for that to happen. And that's why I think Enrique is pulling the best of his.
Yeah, actually, it's a good idea. Anthony?
Yeah, that's.
Mark, you okay with that?
Sure.
Okay. You're it Enrique.
If I could just make one, one quick point. I think that the Community Action Board is also a very good committee to help lead this. Of course, I really believe that partnership is always the best thing. And we need to partner with it, with the, all the different nonprofits to make this happen with the Community Foundation, to make this roll out a successful program. So if, if that is the case, we could certainly engage the Community Action Board, just like we have with the Workforce Development Board, and not forgetting to work with our partners, enrolling this out and reporting back to you. So that's a couple of comments I want to make.
Good ideas. Okay. Any more thoughts, questions, if we can open up to the public?
We added Gary to answer your questions. He's, he's as a panelist. Would you want that or?
If you're going to put Gary on it as a, as a panelist, you should also put, what's her name, Anthony from the United Way? What's her name?
Vicky.
Vicky Fortino too. Yeah. Because that means there's no time limit on that. So I want to be fair. Give both them the opportunity for no time limit. And allow for healthy discussion among the board. So I'm not going to open up the public comment yet. Allow them to speak to, to, to the questions that the board has.
So, so should we start out with Gary?
Yeah. Can you put both of them at the same time? I'll make sure they won't.
So we'll upgrade Vicky to panelist too, because she has been on.
Okay.
Good morning. Good afternoon, everybody. How are you?
We're doing well. Thank you. Good afternoon.
Great. No, thank you. Supervisor, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to talk. I know you are so busy. And I also know you have a lot of emails. And I just noticed the email that I did send you. And I apologize, you weren't able to read it all the way through. But it did say, let me know when it was convenient to meet with you. So I thought you were going to get back to me and set up the time today or yesterday. So my apologies for that. And let me address some of your great questions. So when the COVID epidemic hits San Fernando County and hit our community, United Way and Community Foundation Grant Committee got together. We opened up a COVID fund, distributed away for our community. We raised over $200,000. And the first staging of the funding was to go to any nonprofits. And we said, any nonprofit. You mentioned that a lot of nonprofits don't get funding. We have 155 nonprofits in San Fernando County, and any nonprofit is eligible to apply to a grant fund at any time. We do not discriminate in any shape or form. And over the years, the Community Foundation has actually granted funds to over 90 nonprofits. And we probably haven't granted funds to the others because they haven't applied. And I know the same goes for United Way. And you'll hear from Vicky in a moment. So when we opened the COVID funding, the first stage is for emergency relief for any nonprofit that needed money. And we granted that. I'll just share with you, I looked at the fund here. I had it up in front of me, of some of the grants that we gave out. And you made probably a huge number of different profits. We granted that to the hospitals, Salvation Army, Oldest, Domestic Violence, Community Solutions, YMCA, Sun Street Centers, Catholic Charities for help, which have rent, Chamberlain's Youth Services, First Buy, Hope Services, Suicide Prevention, Senior Council, San Fernando Public Health, the Manger. And then we give some others to UAC. And then we have a group of nonprofits to fund it. So we've granted that over $100,000. We have another $180,000 that we are starting second round of granting, open to any nonprofit. Now, we're doing this totally in conjunction for the first time ever with United Way. So they're bringing their grants committee and our grants committee. And our grants committee is made up of a lot of people that you know. I just have the list here in front of me of people that you know, Lune Maderas, Jerry Johnson, Jerry Wright, Will Sutton, Don Larson, just a lot of leaders. And the way we do it is, we ask every nonprofit to fill in a grant application, which I sent to the county. It's online. It's very transparent. And then there is a visit. We normally do a site visit, but we know the nonprofits. We know what their needs are. And it has been a wonderful experience up to this. The other question that you asked is, for our COVID fund, you mentioned there was a 3% service charge. Well, believe it or not, we waived the service charge for the COVID fund. We did not charge any of our, I mean, we did not take any admin fees from that. So if we got money from the county, we would actually be putting in a grant request ourselves, as would United Way, for some of the costs that we have incurred in the same way. And I love the idea that you and another supervisor would sit on the committee, that would be hands-on. And then you would be able to see where the money is going. So I'll stop there and maybe turn it over to Vicky, and she can add her comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Hi, everybody. Gosh, what a long meeting. I really want to applaud you guys for your patience and the respectfulness you've shown to not only each other, but the community that has made comments. United Way, just to speak, follow up with Gary, United Way has granted currently 26 nonprofits. We do have some guidelines because our focus is on health and human services. We do historically fund nonprofits that deal with children and families and making them healthy and safe. But having said that, because of the COVID-19 situation, we have decided to join our allocations, which is normally, we grant for three years. So a nonprofit that comes to us, we vet very much the same way as Community Foundation. Our volunteers represent a wide range of community members, all walks of life, and all nationalities. So we're a very diverse group, and we're a very economically diverse group. We vet the nonprofits. We open up the, the RFP, the Request for Proposal. It's publicized in every avenue that we can possibly publicize. And everybody is invited to join that fits health and human services for our community, which includes Boy Scouts, you know, the Y. We, we funded small steps. Pretty much everything that we fund benefits children and families. So you can kind of, that's a wide range of nonprofits. What we have decided to do because of COVID is suspend our normal allocations process. We are not going to grant for a three-year cycle based on our normal United Way goals. We are joining with the Community Foundation because we see what's happening out there in the community with food insecurities and rent. I'm so sorry. I get emotional. You guys all know I get emotional. So we, we felt as our, our board and our allocations committee felt that it was very important at this time to join with the Community Foundation and, and pool our, our funds so that we could give the best bang for our bucks to our community and to our nonprofits. So United Way is going to join funds with Community Foundation. We know that $160,000, $80,000 is not going to go very far. Most of our nonprofits have picked up many of the expenses, all of the expenses, that the, that our business community has, had to endure. We have home visits that are having to be done, just like our, our county agencies, our nonprofit agencies are having to do those virtually. They're having to supply PPE. The food distribution that First Buy through the Family Impact Center is doing on Fridays. They're handing out masks and gloves to families. That has been the number one thing that those families, aside from the food, have asked for, been grateful for, that we're giving out masks. So we know that this funding isn't going to, isn't going to go very far. And I really, I think that you can trust the committees and the assets that we have. If there is corruption in any certain way, you know, we respect that. And we will do our best to maintain whatever qualifications that you guys may want to put on it. But our system is tried and true. It's one of the most recognized nonprofit granting systems in the world. It's why several people felt it was important to bring United Way back to our community because our nonprofits do benefit from being a United Way agency. And it does cover, you know, pretty much every nonprofit that wants to apply. And we also don't take, haven't taken an admin fee.
Thank you. Thank you, Vicky. And thank you, Gary, for your guys' comments. Any question, any questions? Actually, more of a comment to both Vicky and Gary. And first one is, thank you for being here. I know it's, it's been a busy day for everyone and for you guys to wait there. Thank you very much. And two, I'm, I'm very happy that you're open to some new ideas and some new partnerships and relationships, including allowing Vicky and, I'm sorry, allowing, oh, God, Enrique, Enrique and the Community Action also to play a role. That's, that's wonderful. And Supervisor Patello and myself, I, I think we can build a good foundation and, and support the nonprofits on the community. That's a great start. I'm very hopeful. And I think the entire board supports those ideas too. Unless, I hear different from the board members right now.
Sure.
Thank you. With that note, Gary and Vicky, I'm going to open up to the public. This is an opportunity for the public to tell us how they feel. We can't respond to any public comments. I'm going to open it up right now. You have any speaker cards?
Colin, if you could please state your name.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, this is Colin Cudmicki. I, I know everybody's ready to watch, so to keep it short. With regard to the grant allocations.
Yes, go ahead.
You just wanted to tell me about that county can inform all businesses, nonprofits, about this opportunity and how to apply in order to ensure affordability. Social media and other, the outlets are great for outreach, but there's really no way to guarantee every business will receive the information. I'm sure will involve local merchant groups with outreach. That's great as well. But even they have a limited reach, limited pool of essential businesses. And so the only way to ensure all businesses are aware of this opportunity is to send notices to every local business in county through the mail in English and Spanish. I strongly recommend sending these notices to a broad database of businesses, such as those paying the business license tax. And I believe it's an ethical obligation to do so. I also suggest you establish the most simplified, fair allocation process possible. I recommend similar criteria, as you, if you look it up, and laid out in the federal emergency grant program, which, which involves allocating a certain amount of dollars per employee up to maximum dollar amount. And generally, I'm cautious against using too much discretion when allocating these dollars. And please keep in mind, there are essential businesses that took severe hits, whether they were open or not. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Elia, if you could please state your name.
I'm Elia Salinas. Yeah, it's getting late. I'm surprised you guys get free for lunch.
We're about to.
I want to confirm, I think it's a great idea that Colin's mentioned about sending a notice out to all businesses that are positioned by the county and by the city. I think it's a great idea. I'm letting Enrique and the Community Action Board oversee this. I think it's also a good idea. And I, I can, I agree with Supervisor De La Cruz, that if the money's a good go, and it's going to be gone, and it's going to go, and there's going to be an administrative fee, or that we know that these nonprofits, the fees goes to administrative costs, and we know that there are, those are really high salaries that are paid. So we need to walk that. And I know that Gary and Vicky just confirmed that they're back. Who's going to try, you know, to do this without me to concur, or try to use any of the money for any of their administrative costs. And I think it's a great idea. The other thing with regards to being able to qualify for this, I would strongly recommend that those businesses, you need to be careful because there was a lot of businesses that already were behind and not being, were not successful. And they were, this COVID hit, and now they use COVID as an excuse and were able to get some money to survive. But COVID didn't get into effect until mid-March, where we knew this was serious. And so if those people, those businesses that apply, I think maybe something should be seen that is, they should have paid their rent on March 1st, because we didn't have this issue. So those companies that are going to, businesses that are going to ask for money, it's because they weren't able to make their money in April and on, if they weren't paying their rent in January and February and all that, and there are a lot out there. There are a lot out there that are now, you know, at Go, you know, GoFundMe, Fund whatever it's called. Those, they, there's no way that they can qualify because like Supervisor De La Cruz was saying, they were already failing companies. You don't want to give money to a company that they're going to take the, the money, and they were already going to fail, and they're already going to close. It sounds callous, but it's a failure to operate a business, whether the economy was not good for them, because in the wintertime, these restaurants have seemed to make a lot of money, especially those in San Juan Baliza because if tourism goes down. So all that needs to take into effect. And I would like to say, with regards to the, the report for that IT councilwoman. And I would like to say, with regards to the report for that IT councilwoman, Claudia Spencer just got here, and I know, can I just pass her on and have her give you a report from Washington D.C. that she came out with regards to broadband? Or can I flag my name again, and can she speak and get three minutes?
No, I'm sorry. I apologize. It's, every individual is only allowed three minutes. Thank you.
How much time do I have?
Thank you, Elia. Thank you. We're done. Thank you. Next speaker.
Cheryl, if you could please state your name.
Yes, madam. Go ahead.
I didn't, I didn't, yeah, I didn't have my hand up to speak. I'm just on, later on, this is Tom Flavich.
Okay, then, okay, we'll go to the next one. Thank you.
Wayne, if you could please state your name.
This is Wayne Martin. I wanted to support Supervisor Medina's suggestion to use as much money as we can for schools, for IT infrastructure. We're getting ready to start a new school year where likely distance learning is going to be a part of the program. We thought the San Juan Batista Rotary has been working with our local school district to try to extend broadband to our kids with low and no connectivity. And we know that in our small school district of about 1,000 students, we have somewhere in the neighborhood of 200 who don't have access to broadband. Just a critical need in this county, and hope that we can find some way to use this funding to help out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom, do you wish to make a comment on this item?
Is that it? Is he for the other one? Okay.
He's for the next one.
Okay. All right, there's no one else then?
No more public comment.
I'm going to close it, bring it back to the board. Okay. Gary or Vicky, you guys want to have any final comments?
No, but I do, I really do appreciate the concern that you've put at the time and effort. I also appreciate the fact that the board supervisors have a listening session for the nonprofits, and a lot of people listen to that. We're hoping, Vicky and my staff and the grants committee, we're actually hoping to launch the second round this week. We have everything ready to go, so if we got a green light from you, then we can actually share the parameters for that funding. And because, as Vicky mentioned, that some of the United Way money has to go to a certain area, so we will make sure it does. If the board supervisors have some recommendations of areas that it can go to, we can do that. Normally, the Community Foundation, we can give a grant to any nonprofit in the county or any nonprofit who serves from the county. But, we will be looking for direction because we're about to send out all that information to the nonprofits. We do it by email, we post it on social media, and we then also post it on our website and on United Way website. We also like to be able to post it on the county's website, as you do the other grant applications for the small businesses. So, we look for direction. It'd be great if we got the green light, and I know you still have to work out to see if you can give it to nonprofits. But, if that happens, we're hoping to put the applications out this week. We're going to give them until the end of this month, and then in the month of, month of July, we will get all the applications, and we hope to have a decision at the end of July, so the money can get out to the nonprofits. So, that's ours and United Way's timeline.
I appreciate...
And I'll just say that United Way and Community Foundation committees will be working together, so there'll be one of each of us on the vetting committees, and that, you know, if you can't give it in bulk to one nonprofit, if you allow us to use our vetting process to, with your approval, you know, with your input, I think we can still manage the funds and make sure they go out to the nonprofits quickly.
Well, thank you for...
Supervisor Patello, you had one really good comment about a lot of our smaller nonprofits, and I'm going to say Little League and some of the sports organizations, they're going to have a little bit of a learning curve, because they, we need to get to them and let them, like Gold Dot Option is a great example. We've granted to Gold Dot Option for the last two years, and we really have to help them write the grant, because they didn't have anybody on their committee. So, if you know of any nonprofit who needs funding, I think the challenge is going to be, like our Commissary check, is getting the word out, letting the nonprofits know there's funding out there. And we will try to keep it as simple as possible and accommodate as many as possible. But, getting the information out to them would be pretty helpful.
I appreciate your comments, and the, tell the truth of matters, and that's, some of my concerns is that you already want us to approve an allocation with you guys' already approved list to send out because of timing. At this time, I cannot support that. I think that Supervisor Patello, myself, and Enrique and the Community Action Board has to talk first, and then have, invite you guys into the table and start talking, but I'm pushing it. And you're correct, Zeke Lopez is actually one of the, one of the groups that I was thinking about that does not conform to the, to your type of funding allocation, because they don't know how to do grant running, they don't have, they don't know the financing, and somehow, we need to eliminate those types of barriers to allow a lot of non, a lot of non-traditional, low, mom-and-pop, small nonprofit goods be able to qualify and get these funding in the most fastest and best way. And I feel that through Enrique's leadership and Community Action, Supervisor Patello, myself, and you guys' guidance, we can work towards that goal.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just another thought to consider, you know, as of late, the leagues, Hulster Little League, Babe Ruth, you know, all the sports leagues, you know, even the Tremors, football, anything having to do with, with, you know, sports activities are officially off the table as far as being able to even start themselves as a program. So, those are, those are, if we're talking about, just like what we mentioned with the business community, impacting or helping those that were the most impacted, those are technically within, they're, they're right now officially the most impacted, right? Well, as far as the staging, right, they're, they've been heavily impacted, they're officially offline right now. So, I think there should be a strong consideration to help those nonprofits and put them to a certain extent at the front of the line for help.
Yeah.
And I have another suggestion. We kind of have earmarked, you know, and, and to me, these numbers might fluctuate from one program to the next program, depending on how, how the need is and, and how we put expenses together. But, maybe if we could make a suggestion, I hope Supervisor Hernandez, you could chime in if you, you think this is a bad idea. Why don't we allocate maybe half of this amount right now to the, to those programs, the Community Foundation, United Way, COVID-19 Relief Nonprofit, and the other half, as far as maybe holding it back and having, you know, flexibility to support some of the other smaller organizations that typically don't go out for grants, they depend on moms and kids selling lemonade and to afford baseball uniforms and things like that. But, why don't we do something like that, so we don't hold up the, you know, COVID relief program that United Way and Community Foundation has? Because it, they do vet this out, it's a lot of work, it's, and somebody's have, have to do it, but at least we, and then we could revisit where we're at in July and allocate a little bit more, or we got it spent through some other way.
I like where you're going, Supervisor Patello. I have no problem releasing $250,000, and my understanding, and Gary and Vicky, none of that is going to overhead for your organizations? Is that, is that, I just need a yes or no answer? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And the other two, and the other two, Supervisor Patello, 250? Let's work with Enrique's group, and we'll get some guidance from both the, from them. But, the goal is to go to non-traditional groups, the other 250. And if there's, if there's 10, 15 non-traditional nonprofit groups, and there's still $200,000 left, Community Foundation and United Way gets it.
Yeah, you know, and one of the things we have to be careful about with some of the more non, because I'm on different fundraising groups, some are big, some are small. I'll give you an example, I'm on the San Juan Service Club. We have a flower show or flower sale, that didn't take place this year, we didn't, and we use that money to do a couple of scholarships with the San Juan Roman School District. It didn't happen, and, well, it's just a couple thousand bucks. We don't want to turn around and give the San Juan Service Club $20,000, something that they would, it'd take three or four years to raise with a flower sale. But, that's the only thing that we have to be very, very careful about, whereas with the United Way, they've already got that figured out. But, I support the, the concept, Mr. Chairman, that I, there's a lot of other smaller groups that aren't able to raise money right now.
So, can we agree?
Yeah, we agree.
Can I add something before you?
Actually, Vicky, I apologize, Vicky, and I apologize, I'm going to remove, I'm going to remove both you and Gary off, because this is a board-level discussion, so I'm going to remove both you guys off. This, this is a discussion between the board members, because other than that, I have to open it to the public, and we already closed public. So, I'm going to remove both you and Gary right now. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Gary, thank you, Vicky. All right, so, we'll do that. Are you okay with that, Supervisor Hernandez? Supervisor Medina?
Sure.
Thank you, Supervisor Elia.
I just want to make a comment, yes, but I would still... Thank you, I just want to make a comment, yes, but I would still encourage you, so you're, you're dividing up the baby again, because we already divided it up, right? We already have two phases, and according to the staff report, we have a $500,000 Phase One for nonprofits, and we have a $500,000 Phase Two for nonprofits. So, it could go up to a million dollars. So, again, I think what's, and I don't want to say bad things, and they come true, but I think what you're going to find is, is we need to work as diligently as possible to get these funds out into the community for a few reasons. Number one, we want the impact to be minimized immediately, we don't want to wait till, you know, we're finally rolling out the money and it's coming out, you know, a day before our, it's going to expire, you know? We need to get this out there right away, and I'd just be very careful about assigning exact amounts, you know, 250 for the traditional, and now the argument's going to be, what's traditional, what's not traditional? We have, you know, we raised $8,000, is that traditional? Is $10,000 traditional? You know, there's going to be a lot of, it's hard, it's hard to say, you know, exactly. So, I just, I want to give you guys more flexibility. I think you really should meet as a group with the folks you mentioned in this room, we have Enrique, the U2, the Community Foundation Giving Community, and United Way. Just, just have a quick meeting this week, you know, quickly, and say, hey, here's what we're looking at, what do you guys see? And then, you know, we, I want to give you guys the flexibility you need, because if we just cut it right in half, and then, now, now what if it doesn't work? You got to wait till...
I'm okay with you giving, the board giving us a flexibility.
You got, you got it, yeah, we, there's $500,000 there, we just want to make sure that your groups are taken care of.
My understanding from the two presenters is that they want to move on today.
Yeah, well, I think you got to start.
That takes away the flexibility, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you got to, you got to.
I can support that.
What, support what?
They want for us to release some type of money.
We don't even have, we don't even have the funds till July 1st, so, we don't have the funds.
No, but what they're doing, no, no, you start the process now.
Yeah.
July 1st is irrelevant, because it's when you start the process. Because if you start sending out applications and say, oh, by the way, we're expected to get all this money, come and, come and submit, come and do that.
Right, right.
Then, all those groups that got notices today are the ones that are going to be first in line.
Well, there's no line, I don't think there's any line. I think you're looking at it wrong. I think you got to get all the interest, just like Colin said, you got to get all the interest out there, and God bless everybody who applies, and then you reach out to the ones you don't think are going to get called, Anthony, I'll call, you know, whatever, let's put it in the paper, let's, let's shout it from the moon and get as many applications as we can.
Then, they can do whatever they want. Then, for us to have full flexibility, they can do whatever they want.
No, no.
We're going to meet, and we're going to discuss.
I don't think they can do anything they want. I think we're allocating the $500,000 today, and then you guys need to meet, I'll make a motion if you needed to, to be clear, I'll let you make it. But, I think what, what we're saying is, let's allocate the $500,000 as per the staff report, because there's probably going to be another $500,000, right? It's right in here, 500, 500, I'm not making it up, it's right there.
Yeah.
So, let's allocate that 500,000 with the, with, with the understanding that, we already said it, you, Supervisor Dela Cruz, Supervisor Patello, Enrique, I'm pointing in the audience to Enrique, and the two groups are going to get together and figure out how to spend this before July 1st, and start telling everybody now, give me your interest, give me your interest to you. If they want to email, if you want it that informal, you know?
I think that's the goal we all want to make, absolutely.
That's what, that's my point, and I just don't want you to see, if you divide it up, I think you're going to come back to the board and say, you know what, it didn't work out.
I just want to make sure that both Gary, and you guys are here, you guys are hearing it, I just want to make sure that both Gary and Ray, it's important for you, because you're going to run on this day-to-day. I want to make sure that both Gary and Vicky are not on the, on the assumption that they got a full half a million dollars to allocate right now, today. Right? Okay, good. All right, what's the motion on the table?
Do you want me to make a motion, Mr. Chair?
Yes, absolutely.
Will that be helpful?
Yes.
I'll do my best. So, we talked about a lot today, but what I recommend is, in general, we adopt staff's recommendation for everything they, they mentioned in the staff report. If you need me to read the lines, I will, but everything that they recommended, specifically as it relates to nonprofits, the $500,000 initial allocation, which is mentioned here in the staff report, will be, will be approved by the board to be allocated to nonprofits, not specific nonprofits, to nonprofits, and that you, because you set up a committee with, it's a very long motion, you set up a committee with yourself, Dela Cruz, Enrique Ariola, and the two groups, which is the Community Foundation and the United Way, to determine which nonprofits, those funds, those 500, initial 500,000 will be sent to. Very long motion, but I think it's needed for the detail. And no, no funds are allocated until your group meets and decides how those funds are going to be spent.
And it has to be 100% consensus group.
I don't want to say that, because you're never going to get 100% consensus.
I already see this as a 3-1 vote.
Well, is my motion, that's my motion.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, there's a second?
I'd do a friendly amendment to that, if that's possible, Mr. Chair.
I want to hear a second first.
What is it? Now, I got to prove it first, and he's got a second. Go ahead.
Who's second? Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Supervisor Hernandez?
I'll just keep it simple, just to make sure that it includes, you know, non-traditional, or according to the current vetting process that the Community Foundation and the, that the United Way have established. So, so, to a certain extent, my, it's simple and short, is what they already have is going to change, right? And it's going to include non-traditional, or according to their current process, different, so that way, we're, we're making sure it opens it up to everybody, and then you guys figure out the details going forward.
I don't, I don't want to leave it to traditional, because I think that is open to interpretation. Here, how about if I say this, people that have been, people that have not been funded by either of these two groups in the past are going to be considered and given weight to make sure that this, this, this funding is allocated universally, and that's all amend my motion to say that as well.
That's fair.
I just want to make sure.
Just to clarify the motion, it's actually to commit, committee, that would be Supervisor Dela Cruz, Enrique, Community Foundation, and United Way.
And Supervisor Patello.
Supervisor Patello.
Okay, and Anthony Patello. And it's, as far as the allocation to both groups that have and have not received funding in the past.
And, and for clarity, it's for the nonprofit element of, of the budget, the nonprofit.
Actually, I got a question for Gary. Gary, you still in the audience? Yes? Bring him up, I got a question for Gary. And this will solve my concerns.
Yeah.
Okay, you heard the motion, right?
Yes.
Okay, with, well, by non-traditional groups and traditional groups, those who are non-traditional groups, you're not going to required that they have, I don't know, accountants on staff, know how to write a grant, we're going to help them the shortest and most possible way to fill application, short of saying, put your name, do you exist, who do you provide? That's basically what I'm looking at. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct, and you mentioned the Gold Dot Option, Zeke. So, I'll give you an example, we have, Zeke has had, we've seen three of Phil Grant from the Community Foundation, and you're right, they're not a traditional 501(c)(3), not a 501(c)(3). But, we're going to need your help and the county's help to make sure that we get the word out. But, anybody with a 501(c)(3) is eligible to receive a grant, or any community group who is not even a 501(c)(3) is eligible to receive... or any community group who is not even a 501(c)(3) is eligible to receive a grant from the Community Foundation and from the United Way, under, under the code. So it's up to any nonprofit. So the challenge will be for us to get the word out and to have a nonprofit apply.
Okay.
We will make it easy for the nonprofits. Some of them will not have a 990. Some of them will not have some of the requirements and we will weigh those requirements for those non-traditional nonprofits. Absolutely.
Okay, you okay with that, Vicky? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Gary. All right, we have a motion on the table. All those in favor, say aye. Against? Motion carries. Five zero. Thank you, guys. Now we're moving forward. Now we will go close session.
Okay, what was there?
No, we're gonna go close session because we're going to have lunch.
Okay, let me, so that one, the one regular item, number 29, is that gonna be after? Is that off or on?
Which one's that? That's gonna be after. We'll come back to that.
Okay, let me just give the board a brief update about number 31, even while it's in open session so the board can determine whether or not to take it off the agenda. There was no stipulation reached, so there was an order, there was a motion filed ex parte and an order to show cause was set for Friday relating to lifting the preliminary injunction and determining the date that the signature gathering has started or will start and whether the preliminary injunction is still in effect. I would request that we continue that meeting to the June 29th meeting so we'll have an update about what happens in court on Friday. If the board would like to meet in close session, we're happy to do so today and give you more of an update. It's up to the board.
I'd rather move it.
Supervisor Hernandez? Move it? Okay, that's two, Supervisor Kelly?
Yeah, move it till we know more.
Supervisor Batello? Okay, just move it out.
Okay, then 32 is close session, performance, public employee performance evaluation. County Council's title authority under Government Code Section 54957.
Okay, is there anyone from the public on close item? None. We will go to a close session now.
Hey, Barbara. Barbara. Anything to report at a close session, Barbara? Thank you. And then now we will go to Ray, Ray Smanosa. Twenty-nine, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, twenty-nine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, this item is basically awareness to our community. And I think Supervisor Gilio is the one that requested to put this on.
Supervisor Gilio?
Yeah, Supervisor Gilio requested to put this on and have PG&E discussion as well as a fire discussion. So I'm hoping that we have Chris Magano on the phone as well as our fire chief. They're going to give a quick update. Chris?
Hello, Ken. I am here, thank you. PG&E will be hosting a wildfire safety webinar for those interested in learning more about community wildfire safety. It will be a Zoom call and it will deliver with all of our community how to prevent wildfires and reduce the impact of the public safety power shut-off this upcoming fire season. You can, there's a slide that they have with the website. For the community that's interested in registering for this Zoom call. But it will provide them with an interaction with PG&E specialists or subject matter experts that can ask questions and share feedback regarding PSPS. So that is what we're working on now. The board and public officials were invited to an event, the JCPOR, on Tuesday the 23rd for PG&E. And it'll be the same thing that the community invited to Wednesday. And we can learn about it with the representatives as well. That information is available if you'd like that. And then we can, I can distribute some of the slides. I can send it to them. Sorry, can I share my screen, they'll say?
Yes, go ahead.
There you go. So for the community, it's Wednesday, June 24th from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. And you can log onto pg&amp;e.com/wildfiresafety to register for the class. And they provide you with the login number a couple days before. So that's available to the community. Chief Martin Del Campo was going to speak about fire safety this upcoming season. However, there is currently an active 60-acre fire down in South County that he was just sent to. So he will not be on this call and says his regrets. This just came up just a couple of minutes ago, calling out. But if there's any questions about PSPS or... But if there's any questions about PSPF or public safety for wildfires, I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
Supervisor Gil, you want to move it to the next meeting so we can have the chief?
Yeah, do we have PG&E on the line? I wanted to be respectful of their time. If they were waiting all day to give a quick presentation, I wanted to allow them to do it. But if they're not on the line, we can do it for our next meeting. The thought was to have PG&E talk about, just like we did last year with their wildfire, because not everybody hits the webinars. And we have a bigger audience here on Facebook, so that was the hope.
Right, PG&E was not available today. They thought they could perhaps be available after their webinars, later in June or July, but they were not available today.
Okay, CAO, can you work on that for next time then? Thank you, thank you, Chris, for the update.
So you want to move it to another?
Yeah, with the board's permission, we can have a presentation at a later date.
Perfect, Supervisor Patel, do you have a question or do you want to wait to?
No, no, that took care of it.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Medina, you want to, it'll be okay? Okay, then we'll move it to another date and let's make sure that we have all parties available. Thank you, Supervisor Gilio.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll go to public hearing. The assessor's office.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we have one compatible use application and the Williamson Act, and that's Bartlett. So this preserve is 46 acres. Contract number is 0704. It's newly planted olive orchard. It's located about seven miles east of Hollister and John Smith Road. The applicant is requesting to construct a managed house on the property. Now, there's currently one existing house on the property, so the owners have requested to build another home, basically to provide the living facility for the entire family to work on the farm. They've built the infrastructure and planted 11 acres of olive trees, that's about 8,000 olive trees. And they've also planned to have a flower farm as their next phase. So they've invested overall $150,000 into the property, including $25,000 for irrigation and rest of the mounted orchard. So in this situation, the additional structure will take about a half acre of land, approximately 1% of the entire property. And the proposed use is incidental, not detrimental to the agricultural use of the property. It meets the criteria of a Williamson Act ordinance, and your Agricultural Reserve Advisory Committee recommended approval of this compatible use request. Do you have any questions? I'm here to answer.
Hey, Tom, I do have a question. Would they have to go through the regular planning process permit or administrative permit process?
Yeah, the next phase to get approval here, they have to go to the building and planning department.
And then pay all the impact fees and everything, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board?
No, other than to say I support this, this has been through the Williamson Act committee already, and I actually support it being in District 4. Thank you.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? Oh, I'm sorry, Supervisor Hernandez?
Public.
Oh, well, thank you. Public comment? Thank you, Supervisor Medina. Anyone from the public?
If you wish to make a comment, press star nine or raise your hand.
I'll close it. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve public hearing number 30. Assessor Slavich.
That's recommended.
As recommended.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, motion carries five zero. Thank you, thank you, everyone. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Wait, hold. Go ahead, Tom.
Go ahead, Tom.
He said thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion. Thank you, it was a very productive meeting. Thank you.